Hello and welcome to this Eureka Regular City Council meeting happening today, February 4th. We're all glad you're all here. Welcome. We're going to open this meeting with the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jirojiji. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And we had no closed session today, so could we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Here.
Mayor Burgel?
Here. And would all who care to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, under Mayor's announcements, we will, first thing, be administering the oath of office to our new Deputy City Attorney Curtis Davis. I, Curtis Davis, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I, Curtis Davis, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution for the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Charter of the City of Eureka?
And the Charter of the City of Eureka.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully?
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter in the capacity of Deputy City Attorney for the City of Eureka?
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as Deputy City Attorney for the City of Eureka.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so also under Mayor's reports, I just want to acknowledge a few things. Oh, I have one other thing, actually. If we could bring up John Friedenbach and Michiko. Welcome from Humboldt Bay Municipal Water.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Burgel. I'm the General Manager at Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. We are the wholesale water supplier for the City of Eureka. Hopefully you know that. You're invited, each council member is invited to an orientation at our Water District if you would like to learn more about our system and where your water comes from. But the real reason I'm here tonight is to announce my retirement as General Manager at the Water District and, more importantly, to introduce my replacement to you, Michiko Mares. She started January 2nd. We issued a press release and I'll leave that here for staff to distribute to you, but I wanted you to meet Michiko.
Great. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Burgel and City Council. I am very honored to be the General Manager at Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District and I look forward to working with all of you and working within the community of Eureka. I am local, born and raised, been gone for several years working in the Bay Area, but really excited to be back. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you for your service. We appreciate you. Okay, so I just wanted to share a few things that I did as Mayor. Is there something?
I apologize, Mayor. Did we have somebody from St. Bernard's as well?
Yeah, I was looking and I don't see. Donette, are you here? I didn't see her out there. So, thank you though. I appreciate that. So, one of the things that I got to do this last, in the last couple of weeks, is I got to attend the Every Student Succeeding Ceremony for the local students of Eureka City Schools. And I'm going to tell you guys that, listening to their stories and where they came from and where they are now, resiliency is a true thing. It really is. These kids have been through hell and they've pulled through and they're living these amazing lives. They're living these lives where they're actually being successful, which I think is really important. And so, I'm just going to read their names really quick because I just, I'm so honored that I got to be there and that I know some of them. So, for Alice Bernie Elementary, Dacey Stockoff was the winner. And what this does is, if you are in Every Student Succeeds, there's a county and then there's a statewide thing that you can go to. So, we're hopeful to send some of our students to the county level. Grant Elementary is Diego Vialma Garcia, Lafayette Elementary, Christopher Osborne Hohn, Washington Elementary Ryder and Luca Carmody. They're so cute. You guys are twins. Winship Middle School, Christopher Suarez Ortiz, Zane Middle School, Joseph Higgins, Zoe Barnum High School, Nakai Magana, and Eureka High School, Anthony Robertson. And I just wanted to share with you that Nakai Magana was the winner of the Eureka City Schools succeeding ceremony. And he's a kid that goes to Zoe Barnum. He's a kid that had been institutionalized for 19 months, got out. He is now going to be going to Shasta College and going to art school. And it's just an incredible thing when we have people around our kids that support them and what they, and who they are and what they're doing to be successful. And so, I just want to appreciate our community because each and every one of us steps up for our kids every day, in some form or another. And I just want to appreciate that. And then, I wanted to talk a little bit. We got to go to the Bolt Gala, which is a chamber dinner. And I just, I'm always so excited to hear the people that they honor. And this year, they really, was really great. We've had Lynn McKenna at this meeting before. Many of you may remember her. She was here for the Jazz Festival. Well, she also heads up the Alzheimer's teams now and she works really vigilantly with the Alzheimer's groups, prevention, those kinds of things. And so, they honored her with an award. And also, Scott Hammond, who does the, oh God, it's the, they do a veterans thing once a month. And now, it's escaping me what it's called, but it's really neat. They honor a veteran once a month and Humboldt Heroes. They honored him as well. So, a lot of wonderful things happening in our city. The last thing I'll say is that I did attend, Supervisor Arroyo had a meeting about healthcare in our region and how we can bring providers in. And one of the things that she talked about a lot, and one of the things that I'm hearing a lot in our community, is that Eureka, we've known this for a while, we got a self-esteem problem, you guys. We got people that have lived here their whole lives that are just talking garbage about our city all the time. And maybe people that haven't lived here their whole life. And so, to you who want to speak poorly of our city, please, join us, pick up an order. There's a, there are so many opportunities for you to get involved and be a part of our community. And we would love to have you. I think, you know, having that kind of community pride is really important. And it seems that we are lacking that. And that was one of the things that Supervisor Arroyo had brought forward. There were a lot of other items as well, but that certainly, certainly is a big one. When we have people come to town and then people are just talking garbage about our city all day long. It's just, it's really unfortunate and disappointing, to be honest with you. So, with that, we're going to move on to the public comment period. So, this is the time, and thank you for listening. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment, or portion thereof, shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. And I see we've got someone? Come on up.
Good evening, Council and Madam Mayor. Yesterday, there was a meeting of neighbors, Open Door personnel, representatives from EBD and others at 1522 Third Street. During the meeting, Commander LaFrance of EBD pointed out that Hatcher is in violation of the Eureka SEP ordinance, 93.54F, which states that SEPs are not allowed to operate within 1,000 feet of a city park. And 1522 Third is about 500 feet from Clara Mayberry Park. Some have argued that Hatcher's mobile operation is allowed because the ordinance has an exception for mobile outreach workers. So, does outreach mean syringe services? Hatcher distinguishes between the two. From their 2020 annual report, "In the coming months, we will be hiring Chris and Stacy as hourly employees. Chris will be hired as our outreach peer lead and Stacy will be hired as our syringe services program peer lead. Outreach and syringe services are distinct activivities at Hatcher." It's been seven years since the SEP ordinance was written and memories may differ, so to be sure, we should look at the original intent of the ordinance, as expressed during the meeting, March 20, 2018. At that meeting, Kim Burgel states, quote, "We'd talked about having these places next to parks and I'd like to add that piece, that we don't allow them within 1,000 feet of a park." Natalia Arroyo brings up the topic again, saying, "It currently states that SEPs are not allowed to operate within 1,000 feet of an elementary and/or secondary school. And I was adding a park because it was important to some of the council members." In introducing the final vote, she reiterates, "And add in the 1,000 feet from parks." There's no mention of exception for mobile syringe exchange near a park or school at any time during the detailed discussion of the ordinance. The council did not believe the ordinance would allow for syringe exchange near parks and schools, period. This is the original intent of the ordinance and it is how it should be interpreted today. No syringe exchange programs next to parks or schools, whether fixed or mobile. Outreach workers providing things like overdose prevention and HIV/CHV testing are allowed. That's common sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Hi, welcome. Are you going to come on up? That's going to be later on the agenda and you can speak it at that time. You betcha. No, uh-uh. We'll just, yeah. We'll have you guys line up. Is there anybody else that would like to comment in public comment that is something not on the agenda? Hi,
Good evening. Yesterday, neighbors to the Open Door location at 1522 Third Street attended a meeting with Open Door personnel and others at that location. Open Door was generally surprised at the number of people in the room. Time was limited as the Open Door representative was needed elsewhere. After the meeting, I went home to review the council meeting in which ordinance 93.53 was adopted. Reiterated several times were variations of the phrase that policy could easily be made as needed to adapt the law to changes. I spent some time going to the policy manual online and wasn't able to find policy on syringe exchange programs. I've written a request for the policy and sent it through channels. I'm waiting to hear back. If policy does not exist, I urge you to follow the ordinance as it is currently written, which states that SEPs shall not operate within 1,000 feet of a park. While you enforce that without playing with the meaning of the words "mobile outreach worker," please write a policy that incorporates some definitions to protect that 1,000-foot zone, including: A. Outreach does not include syringe exchange and/or the distribution of other drug paraphernalia, including but not limited to snorting kits, smoking kits, and kits for anal drug use. B. Mobile outreach workers do not possess, distribute, or exchange any of the previously mentioned paraphernalia, including syringes. C. Mobile syringe exchange and paraphernalia distribution does not go near a park of any sort or a school or childcare facility, regardless of private property. D. All syringe exchange sites shall be at least 3/4 of a mile apart. And E. All syringe service sites shall not be located in residential or mixed-use residential neighborhoods. Given that paraphernalia is now being distributed of other types than syringes, it needs to be included in the numbers count and segregated by type. How many pipes are handed out and how many came back? How many snorting kits? How many anal drug use kits? Let's get a little less vague about cleanup while we're there. Cleaning up only the area around an exchange van is neither the spirit nor intent. This serves only to emphasize that harm reduction bubble is nice and warm and wonderful and forget about the war zone that is created outside of that bubble. Get the volunteers, supporters, and staff on a specific cleanup schedule and locations that can be identified by various city departments. Have a cleanup hotline with a mandatory maximum two-hour response time. The neighborhood around 1522 Third Street is only starting to regenerate after the destruction that was allowed to run through it. What will happen again is foreseeable. The people in that neighborhood were pushed to the breaking point and existed well beyond anything they should have had to endure. Now is the time for the council to protect this neighborhood and all neighborhoods by providing definitive, well-thought-out policy to give constructive backing to the ordinance and relief to all living and working in Eureka.
Thank you, Judy. Hi. Come on up. Welcome.
Yeah, my name is Rick Hercher. I was at that meeting yesterday and I would like to concur with Judy. I've spent a lot of years in forest products industry as a past career, writing a lot of environmental impact statements, balancing environmental concern with logging industries. And sitting at that meeting, I noticed there is no consensus on policy or procedures. There's no consensus on whose responsibility or whose accountability is not written in any policy and procedures. So, there's this chaos back and forth because there's no guidelines and they're not clear, concise. I would suggest the City Council review their SEP program in light of a full impact statement, which takes into social considerations, movements of populations in relation to that program. And like an environmental impact statement, look at this and how it's affecting the city. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on things not on the agenda? Okay, seeing no one. Is there anyone on Zoom, Shannon? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. There is someone coming up. Welcome, Denise.
Good morning. Good evening. Good afternoon, whatever time zone we are in this evening. My name is Denise Riles. I live at 203 S Street. And this is Sheila.
Hi, Sheila.
We are members of the 4th Ward and we want to thank Mr. Gary Lewis for setting up the meeting that we've been talking about. Getting together with your neighbors and having Neighborhood Watches work, ladies and gentlemen. And it was a pleasure to be a part of the discussion yesterday. It was lively. And Renee, thank you so much for being there for the 5th Ward. And we also appreciate everybody else that was attending that meeting. How we left the meeting was, we are going to get weekly updates from Open Door as they are considering other options. And I'm going to get that from Gary and Gary, and I'm going to forward it to everyone else. Unfortunately, our 4th Ward was not able to be there. He was, had other meetings and things to do. But we encourage the both of you to get together and sift through that information and keep us informed of what you decide because we're here for it. Sheila.
Okay. Denise is shorter than me.
Should we start the clock over? Thank you.
I'm Sheila O'Donnell and I was at the meeting too. And it was great. It was full of engaged people that are concerned. And Open Door was wonderful to meet with us and Hatcher as well. So, I'm just wondering about the wisdom of having needle exchange program in a residential neighborhood. Seems like there's lots of other locations. Now, we have, we had, well, it's called needle exchange, but we have it at the Smolbridge launch. And now, it's been opened again over there on Third Street. So, they're very close together and our neighborhood is right in between. And we see the impact of drug use that results from having these needles available. So, I just, I don't know why it can't be put in non-residential areas. I understand the need for needle exchange and that it has value, but why do that? It just seems like there are better locations.
Thank you, Sheila. Thank you, ladies. Okay. Seeing no one out in the audience, we will go to Zoom.
Sarai?
Sorry.
Sorry? Nope, it's Sarai. Thank you. Yeah, hi. I just, hopefully this doesn't take all the time. But I just want to make a quick comment about the self-esteem issue that was spoken to. It just seemed a little bit preemptive, seeing how many folks came to the meeting to be involved. And I just would invite folks to think about, like, instead of thinking that people are talking trash on the city and that folks need to join your communities, potentially think about how people asking, are asking for accountability within the city. We're asking for practices to match up with what is being said. We're asking for folks to not be depending on open-mindedness for our protection. Why don't folks come out and kind of understand, not the trash talking that's being done, but maybe, potentially, the concern that citizens have again and again and again and again and again over issues that really, really, really aren't being handled in a way that is equitable or just? So, I would just encourage folks to not start meetings, assuming that people have a self-esteem issue, when in actuality, it's the city that is making it so that people are really, really, really having to think about their survival over their thriving or their self-respect or their self-esteem. It just seems a little bit tone deaf and it seems to speak to a lot of the issues that constituents really are concerned with. Because a lot of spaces that we exist in, it's not necessarily talking crap about the city. We don't have self-esteem issues. We're just continuously tired of being, of folks saying that we're wanted in spaces, of folks getting money for us being in spaces, of folks enjoying the hell out of our presence at their parties, enjoying the hell out of the flavor that we bring to events, enjoying our liveliness and our joy, but really having a hard time with our resistance and with our asks for accountability. So, I would really, 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 really encourage folks to not, to take themselves out of it and to understand that folks are not attacking the City of Eureka. We are really just trying to hold it to the standard that it says it is trying to achieve. At the meeting earlier this morning, the Board of Supervisors even said, like, "Oh, these are issues that you need to bring to City Council." And now, City Council is saying that we're having a self-esteem issue. So, I, like, I would encourage the Board of Supervisors and City Council to speak to each other. I would encourage you guys to understand why so many people are having this issue that you're talking about. I would encourage you to, maybe, instead of asking that we join your communities that are often not welcome.
Thank you, Sarai. Your 30, your 3 minutes are up, but we appreciate you being here for sure. Thank you. Who's next?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I just have a question to, to the people that, well, like, it's a hypothetical question. You don't have to answer it. But to the people that are trying to remove the needle programs because it's in residential areas, okay, my question is, like, where exactly do you guys want it? If it's not in residential areas, then, like, where, if it's not in public, in public spaces, like, near parks, near schools, none of those public spaces? And also, you guys don't want it near residential areas? Then where? Near businesses? And then businesses are going to come and be like, "Oh, we actually don't, also don't want the near businesses." So, like, where are these services are supposed and meant to be provided? In the middle of nowhere? In the desert where nobody can access them? I'm like, these services are there in the public space for a reason. And you guys complaining that it's like, that you guys don't like it? I mean, like, that, if you don't like it, that service is probably not for you. But like, not because you don't use it, you're going to take it away from people that actually need it. So, yeah, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Gina.
Hi, thank you. I'm going to leave my comment about the flock cameras until that agenda item, but I wanted to mention that it came to my attention today that, last year, the Board of Supervisors approved what I think is a one-year contract with a reality TV show called On Patrol Live. I don't know if anyone else on this call has, or how many folks have heard about that. But I heard of someone who was stopped for a routine traffic stop and two cameramen and crew members, along with the police officer who was pulling them over for, like I said, a basic kind of taillight situation, get out, and all of a sudden, there's entertainment being made with their engagement with the cops. I think this is super, just disrespectful and gross, honestly. Entertainment based on people's, scary. It's scary engaging with an armed officer who can find the various reasons to non-consensually take you away and cuff you. Doesn't even always end that beautifully for people. So, I just want to say, I hope the City of Eureka can consider how messed up that is and put pressure on the county. I'll also be engaging with the county. I wasn't able to make it to the call today. But please put pressure on the county to end that contract. Even if y'all need to pay some sort of fee for ending early, that's in the best interest of ethics and the people who live here. And also, definitely don't reinstate that contract when it's up. Thank you.
Thank you, E. Looks like Ellen? Excuse me, before you go, Ellen, I just want to remind everybody that in this meeting, we do have decorum. We don't clap or shout out or make noise when people share. And that's so that people can feel comfortable, regardless of your opinion. We want everybody to feel comfortable and safe in here as they're sharing. So, we'd appreciate if we could, you know, do your hand thing or whatever you want to do, but just let's keep the noise to a minimum. Much appreciated. Okay, Ellen.
Hi, I have a question. I hope you can answer when I'm done. And that is, how much time there is for this public comment period for each commenter? And then, I'm also wondering how much time we will have for commenting on agenda items because I do have a comment later. I don't have a prepared comment right now. I just wanted to uplift everything that Sarai and Gina said. I also, just like, an hour ago, learned about that super gross contract that the city, or the county, has with the reality TV show. That's like, wow, so gross. And didn't know about it. But, and then, the other thing I wanted to mention was, I did attend the Board of Supervisors meeting this morning in support of Centro del Pueblo and all of our immigrants in our community. I was very happy to see that it was well-attended. There's lots of support for immigrants in our community. And we don't want to see families separated or people living in fear. So, I hope everyone keeps showing up for all of our, you know, endangered folks right now. And I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Public comment is 3 minutes, regardless of what you're commenting on. So, you'll get 3 minutes here, 3 minutes there, depending on the item. All right. We will close public comment. Do you see anybody else? I didn't see anybody else.
I see no one else on Zoom.
Great. So, we will close public comment and move to the consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22. If a member of the public would like an item on this consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. And I haven't been informed of anything being pulled. Anyone?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. And this moves us to legislative action? Not yet. We're gonna get there soon. This moves us to ordinances and resolutions. So we have our budget allocation for Eureka Operations Complex with Public Works Director Ellen. Pardon? Oh, it's reports and action items. Excuse me. I was looking at the line above. Welcome. Wait a minute, that's Katie Marsalon. Hello, Ms. Marsalon.
Hello. Good evening.
You introduced to incorrectly.
Okay. So the item before you is regarding our Eureka Operations Complex. I think we're up and running. So my name is Katie Marsalon. I'm a project manager with our engineering department. And I have some introduction and background information and some project status items. And we'll address the specific action item as well. Let's see if I can make the PowerPoint work. So the specific requested action tonight is about a budget allocation for fiscal year 2425. And at each kind of milestone or interval for the Eureka Operations Complex, we've come back to the City Council, provided an update, provided some general, um, updates on the cost estimates for the project and then allocated along the way. So for other capital projects, oftentimes we will determine a fixed amount that's part of our larger adopted budget. But for this project, we did not take that method. The city has already acquired the property, completed SEQA and the related studies, and facilitated a concept planning phase and a schematic design phase. And then, as I mentioned, the City Council has provided some incremental budget authorization at those steps. So this is another one of those return, report, and requested action. I do have some information that you may have seen before, but it helps to put it all together. So give a quick background. There has been a longstanding goal to relocate the current public corporation yard that's on West 14th. The facilities have aged significantly and council and staff have prioritized this project and put us down this path thus far. In November of 2023, City Council took action on the acquisition of a site at Ocean View Cemetery. There was also action for adopting the initial study mitigated negative declaration, the ISMND, and then authorizing the stages of work at that point where a 50% schematic design. And also moving towards a procurement method for a construction manager at risk. Uh, staff returned to council in September of 2024 and then at that point provided another update. And there was an award of a contract for a construction manager at risk to Swinton Builders. The project site is at 3993 Broadway. And if you're familiar with where Pacific Motorsports is off of Highway 101, this property sits immediately behind that building. It's in an upland location and it's outside of the coastal zone and other hazard areas. So our current corporation yard is located in the tsunami inundation zone and also in a site with soils that are related to liquefaction and it's not earthquake safe. So again, moving forward, the city's already purchased this parcel and that escrow closed in May of 2024. That earlier concept design work was really to build a, uh, site plan for the site. How would the space be used? And then to identify the uses of those space and the potential impacts for the related environmental studies. So this is again, just review that the resulting outcome of the concept phase was a proposed buildout of 4.8 acres, including three separate buildings and then all the surrounding amenities and circulation and drivelines and parking. So at this facility, we do provide this vision that we would co-locate our fleet maintenance crews and all of the equipment that we serve, which is all of our city fleet, police fleet, all of Humboldt Bay fires, fire trucks and fleet. We would also provide buildings and structures for our sanitary sewer collections and maintenance teams, our water distribution maintenance teams, and then our streets crew members. And then also this vision that maybe we would have additional office or crew spaces for other functions. So this was the big visioning portion. I've shown this slide before, just to remind you, a project of this scale requires a lot of different steps. And that would be procurement, design, budgeting, a final design step. And then for the type of contract that we're looking at, it's called a GMP or Guaranteed Maximum Price Contract. So in other large capital projects, we often will design everything and then we put it out to bid. But if those bids are too high, we might have to reject the bids and then we need to redesign and reevaluate. So we were looking at a different type of procurement. So we did a procurement analysis. And, uh, council, uh, and staff moved forward with a construction manager at risk method, and that is what we've currently been working with Swinton Builders on. And this allows that firm to engage with us during design. Then we reach a final design package. They propose back to us a guaranteed maximum price. And then they carry the financial responsibility of delivering the project for that price to help us stay on budget and on time for the project. So we moved into a schematic design phase, again, review here. We took the, the feel of the site from a 2D and really looked at 3D, getting utilities up to the site, getting our new PG&E service, right sizing the buildings, the, the kind of materials and methods that would be used at the site. And the changes between this early kind of concept plan and then the schematic design, we're reducing from a three-building scenario to a two-building scenario, combining some of the types of materials. So going to all metal buildings, so streamlining the layout, streamlining the costs for the structures and then allowing for potential growth. So you've seen some of these, but we're here tonight to talk about money. So I'm gonna bring it back around to that. Uh, we have a number of projects to accomplish here at the city of Eureka. Uh, this particular facility is one of many, and so we have set a budget of 21 million. The team, leadership team and our finance director have been engaging with a financing package. And there might be other city projects that are funded through that financing package. But what we're looking at is potentially 7 million target for the site development or Phase One, 11 million towards the buildings and upright structures at this site, and then 3 million for all of those design services and support services and utility connections. And the reason I repeated those three steps are that for any project to be successful, we have to have those main elements. We have to know what are the features, what's our budget, and what's our work plan to move forward. So with all of that earlier work that was done, we came into this work plan that Swinton Builders, who's now in contact with the city, would provide the pre-construction services for both Phase One and Phase Two, and then we'd work towards a GMP. And if you can see, we're right in this timeline here. Spring and summer of 2025 is when we want to get towards that GMP award for construction during 2025 dry season. So this was our last budget allocation. And this allowed Swinton Builders to come under contract with the city and Scott Edwards Architecture to produce 100% schematic design. If you wanted another reminder, what does that mean? Swinton Builders has been doing daily and weekly coordination reviews, discussing costs with sub-trades, looking at cost trends in the industry, talking about the project logistics and the timeline, and how does this work into the total budget for our project? And then when they get to this team, 90% construction documents that they will bid this to sub-trades, which would be local and regional contractors for the proposed work. So now we're moving into final design and GMP award. And this is where we're at, up here in the blue. We wrapped up November to January 2025. The OAC Owner Architect and Contractor Team have completed 100% schematic design. We're moving into design development and construction documents for Phase One at a future meeting. Later this, well, into the early, late, late spring, early summer, we would be moving towards a GMP award. And then our Phase Two tasks also come online in the future. So here's the big reveal. Um, if you're tracking kind of 50% versus 100% schematic design, this OAC team really dug in over the last couple of months in looking at everything that we were proposing in a schematic design level for a two-building scenario, and we're now proposing a one-building scenario. And what this does is it takes all of the services or programming that was identified in this fleet building and it literally moves those bays into a bit of a sandwich in between the two. So this saves on costs. We're no longer running utilities to two separate structures. We're no longer doing finished plumbing and finished, you know, spaces in both of those. We're no longer building exterior siding on both and roofing on both. So it's really trying to stretch our dollar as far as possible. Just another kind of close-up of, this brings the facility a little more central into the site. And it allows the city the option to, as the grading plan is currently proposed, this upper north area is a leveled area that could accommodate a future building. Additionally, this lower south portion is graded in a way that that could also accommodate a future building. So we can still build out to that earlier phased plan with three structures. You would still be within your SEQA planning documents. But this is what we can, um, do right now with the dollars that we have right now. And so we're looking at reducing from two buildings to one. We would keep, be combining fleet and warehouse with the crew operations area. And that crew operations area is directly for the people working at the site. So they come in, they have a computer or work table. They have their restrooms, they have all their gear. And then over here, we're actually having larger bays where we have equipment and pallet racking and tools and, um, we are prioritizing the function of the existing corporation yard staff. So this scenario no longer includes co-locating any admin or engineering staff from City Hall. So we're really pushing for everyone who's down at West 14th, moving them to this new site as a priority. And then again, just going to a one-building scenario reduces all of that, uh, cost for finishing on two separate buildings. So some of the things I previously mentioned, retaining a site layout that allows for people after us at the city of Eureka to build, um, build out this site in a phased way. So those are your updates. Here's a bit of an elevation view of that one building. And what, uh, we are proposing now is to spend these remaining months in February through June to produce those construction documents. And to get us from here to there, we are requesting 1.4 million. And this is how the, that allowance or that available budget would likely be set aside for our PG&E new service. That application is underway. We will likely have deposit and new transformer connection fees. We will likely have, um, long lead times for our generator. This is an emergency site. And we're seeing that generator can take anywhere from 48 to 52 weeks after order. So we need to start that lead on that, um, order. We also have our pre-engineered metal building company once we start design for that structure. We don't want to have any delays, so allowances for that. We'll be working with Scott Edwards Architecture again for construction documents. And then a little bit of our smaller pieces, which might be additional state studies. We have stormwater pollution prevention plan documents to prepare. We have some additional kind of contract review and administrative items and some initial permit fees. So that is my summary. I'm very happy to answer questions and go from there.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions? Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you very much for that, uh, presentation. And I appreciate seeing how the design, um, shifts as we go along. That first version being the Cadillac, uh, version. Of course, we were always going to scale down. Um, sorry for the weird detail. What is a Gabbin wall?
That's a great question. So just across the street from the site, the Hillficker, big operation kind of industrial area, they produce some of those materials. So it's a, it's a little bit of a mixed materials wall. And it doesn't sound very exciting, but it uses a, a metal framing or a rebar framing with rock inside of it. And then you can actually plant the wall. So it's kind of a landscape feature, provides some visual screening, also provides some fencing around the area. So it's one style of, uh, landscape or fencing that we were looking at.
And I know that's not what we're necessarily talking about, but one of the things I liked about the initial, uh, strategy around the design was to use the, um, orientation of the structures to help prevent, um, like noise bleed over into the cemetery. Um, and I see the, the buildings shifting a little bit, that there seemed to be less building between the, um, the loud tools and the mourners. Is the Gabbin wall going to serve a similar purpose?
Yeah, that's a great question. We do have some commitments to the cemetery when we made that purchase and it's part of our purchase and sale agreement. And it's to help create a buffer. So it might be a buffer with a landscape screen or with fencing, or it might be the way we actually organize the vehicles at the site. So the, um, we were trying to keep a back of house, which I think is what you're mentioning, and we're still working towards that. And part of the perspective views, it's hard to share it with the drawings I showed tonight. We're trying to do those 3D renderings and thinking about the grading of the site and how the buildings are positioned. And so the perspective looking on, in, down and into the site to balance that. So could the building sit slightly lower and then the landscaping is kind of up and bermed around? So having those features, we're still trying to retain that. But we, we aren't doing it the same way, like we were with shielding it with a building.
Gotcha. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that as we're trying to save money on the project, we're still trying to also be good neighbors.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you, Project Manager Marsalon. Um, just a quick question. What's the anticipated savings with the change in design plans?
So that, um, two-building scenario, as much as we tried to make the buildings small, we were still up above, uh, we were still close to 28 million, almost 30 million for the two buildings. And now we're down close to 20 million. So we're still trying to shave here and there and everywhere.
Thank you.
Okay. No further questions. We'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? She's coming. Welcome.
Sorry, it takes me a bit to waddle up here. Um, my question is, uh, two questions. Uh, on this show, on the drawings that you showed, how far is the Wash Bay from the adjacent property? And will any hazardous material washed be caught before it, uh, before going on to the adjacent property? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on this item? Do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom for this item.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to council for comments and, uh, a motion. Councilmember Castellano? I see you're moving towards your button.
Thanks. Uh, first, I'm, I'm wondering, uh, just for the sake of the public, if you would mind answering the question.
Yeah, gladly. Um, I don't have that image up. We might be able to grab it one more time and share it. Because if possible, I'm wondering if the person who helps us with the slides would turn the slides back on. Oh, thank you so much. Okay. So I appreciate this question because of everything we changed or reduced. We have kept this big block on the south end of the property and it says decant and wash bay. And that's an interesting title. And what this means is it, it is a decontamination site. So we have a responsibility based on our stormwater permit, our MS4, that when we bring material, whether it's coming in and out of this site, or if we have a, a muddy project where we're working, we cannot mix those muddy soils and have those leach into our storm drain system. And this is a new kind of a, we have these facilities in other ways, but this would be the best way for us to have it where a VATCon truck is a really fancy vacuum truck and it sucks up wet material. And it would come into this site and unload those wet, heavy materials. It's actually plumbed to sanitary sewer. So those are all separated at the site and it all goes into a containment process and a treatment process. So that is exactly why we have this here. It has to be, uh, It has to be a three-sided structure. It has to meet these very specific, specific code requirements because we don't want exactly what the public comment was about is having anything sliding or leaching or the perception that that's happening. So this facility is designed where we bring the yucky material and we treat it and we're putting it into a treatment system. So that's not a very technical way of saying it, but.
Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you. I move to authorize the budget allocation, the amount of one million, four hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five to account two four zero four seven zero zero seven zero two four for the Eureka Operations Complex Project.
Second.
So we have a motion and second. Are there any further comments? Please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Great. Okay, this moves us to the Flock Safety Automated License Plate Recognition Cameras and Technology with Chief Stevens. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On October first of last year, I along with representatives from Flock Camera Systems did a presentation to you on my proposal to con- contract this service for use within the city. I presented a draft policy at that time and we answered questions as part of the presentation. In the end, you request we take the proposal back to the community oversight on police practices board. Further input and bring it back to you tonight. So tonight's information or presentation aren't about the why we want the cameras or we need the cameras. I want this technology to help fight our crime within our city. You already know that. But more to present the facts about the technology and what we have done to get this project back before you tonight. I've made a conscious effort to hear and listen to your concerns and address those concerns in an effort for the Eureka Police Department to further carry out our mission while maintaining the highest level of transparency and integrity of the privacy of the community I protect and serve. This is what I have done to try and give you the confidence you need tonight to make a decision. I have met with the city attorney and the city manager to review your concerns, met with the I P A, our independent police auditor, and they shared a policy they helped create that had valuable clarifying language. I met with the cop board and added additional oversight to our policy. I spoke with the city's risk manager from C I R A and I verified the legal standing of Lexipol for our policy updates. Following the council meeting and over the last few months, the issue of privacy is obviously the overbearing concern, not only stemming from the potential implementation of this technology in our community, but in our society as a whole. As a chief of police, I can't address that fear and concern on a national level, but I can address it on a local level as it relates to the implementation and use of the Flock technology. So this is what I've done since the last meeting to answer these concerns and hopefully lessen that fear and concern surrounding the technology. I'm confident I have put the right safeguards in place to swiftly and appropriately deal with any violations of policy that should arise. And having heard your concerns, I'm just going to elaborate on what those bullet points that I mentioned were. The city manager and I met with the city attorney to roundtable the concerns presented by council and created a path forward. That path included the city attorney researching the legal concerns raised by council and if needed, presenting fact-based findings at this meeting. And the city manager and I taking the topic to the cop board for presentation, conversation, questions and answers, and receive recommendations in regards to the technology and the draft policy. I reached out to the independent police auditor, who is hired by the city, in regards to the agencies they work with to have this technology and ask for assistance in any policies they have played a role in creating and approving for these agencies. As always, we openly discussed this process and they were able to provide me an A L P R policy from Santa Cruz P D, who they worked with as auditors and worked with to craft their policy. I reviewed the policy, which was further approved by Lexipol, which is implemented and in place in Santa Cruz. When I reviewed this policy against the one presented at last council meeting, I found there were almost verbatim. Some differences I found, though, were just an expansion of some of the sections in the explanations surrounding the quoted codes and to explicitly spell out the impermissible uses. In the policy that was attached to the agenda summary for tonight, you'll find those additions in bold. I believe these additions answered and further clarify concerns presented in the prior meeting. This is the policy that I created and presented to the cop board on January twenty eighth. And following that meeting, placed additional safeguards into the policy following their recommendations, specifically that we report out annually on the use of the Flock technology and that we will conduct at least one audit a year of the system, the searches, and that the policy has been adhered to in regards to how the technology is being used. I reached out to Eriak Young, who is the Deputy General Manager for C I R A, California Intergovernmental Risk Authority, the risk managing agency for the city of Eureka. I asked Eriak to provide further explanation on their relationship with Lexipol in regards to risk management and how they provide Lexipol services to their agencies at no cost. This is Eriak's response to my inquiry. As Lexipol is considered the gold standard when it comes to providing law enforcement policies and procedures that meet California law, case law and best practices, we provide their services at no cost to C I R A member agencies. One of the main reasons that we provide Lexipol that when their policies, procedures are followed, we are in a much better position to defend a claim. All other policies are created and reviewed by law enforcement experts as well as attorneys with expertise in defending law enforcement claims. As an agency, we work closely with Lexipol in regards to our policies, receiving updates about weekly in regards to current policies that are then reviewed internally, approved and then published as updates to our policy manual. As an example, over the past couple of months, we reviewed and approved more than twenty policy updates with another twenty or so in different stages of approval. This goes on throughout the year as case law changes, as best practices changes or anything else in the law enforcement field changes, they update our policies to make sure that we're using the most current information. I'm going to end with this. Twenty six years ago, when I was hired by Chief Arnie Millsap, he had one request of me as a new officer and that was to always work to lessen the fear, anger and anxiety in our community. Throughout my career in each rank I've held, I've worked to carry out the chief's mission and requests to me. And it means even more to me now as chief of police. I believe this technology will be another tool to help myself and the men and women of the Eureka Police Department to carry out our mission and provide the highest level of service to our community while maintaining the trust, transparency and privacy for all of those we serve. I would like now to turn it over to the Flock representative um, to address some of the concerns from the last meeting that they've been able to provide some clarification for.
Are they on Zoom? Thank you.
Hi, Council. Thanks for uh passing to me. My name is Tariq Bright. Uh, if you could, please uh unmute Kristen. She's going to be the next to uh.
So Derek, can you unmute Kristen? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We really appreciate the opportunity to join you all this evening and to address concerns that have come up specifically regarding data security. So I would like to share, um, Chief shared these concerns specifically with us. Um, number one, all of the data that is captured by the L P R cameras, um, that would be in your community, all of that information is encrypted end to end. Um, we take data security very seriously at Flock. And although there is no um sensitive information or biometric information contained within the Flock system whatsoever, we still take the greatest care to protect that data. And we do that by encrypting the data end to end. We are specifically um A E S two fifty six encrypted. And end to end meaning that it is encrypted on our devices. The data is encrypted in transit and it is also encrypted while it is stored. There was a question regarding A W S key, whether or not our keys are stored separately from the encrypted data. And they are. Um, we utilize A W S key management services and it's separate from the A W S service um, or that cloud service where our customers' data is stored encrypted. Um, furthermore, we had learned that there were some concerns surrounding um A I and really want to share that. It's important to note that this is a tool for your, your law enforcement, for Eureka P D to alert them to wanted or suspected vehicles in the community. We're providing a searchable database that may provide investigative leads and objective evidence in the event a crime occurs. I want to make very clear that our system does not make enforcement recommendations, nor is it predictive policing. We're not predicting where or when crime occurs. Um, the technology takes the information contained in the still images and organizes into that searchable database, which uh Chief has shared his policy with you and uh, and how they would go about searching that data and also the protections and privacy guardrails. So with that, I will pause and um want to make sure that we covered the questions that council had. If there are any additional questions, we're really happy to answer those.
Councilmember Molton?
Thank you. I do have a question. I've said lots of questions, but we'll, we'll get to that. Um, thank you, Chief, for your presentation again. And I had a question specifically about, uh, you just mentioned the end to end encryption. You said that the, the first encryption step happens at the device itself. Is that before it's transferred to a computer away from the device?
Correct. All of the data, it's encrypted end to end. So the moment that the image is captured by uh, by the camera, that data is encrypted. It's encrypted when it's in transit uh to the cloud and then it's also encrypted when it is stored on the cloud.
Okay, thank you. That's all for now, thanks.
Anything further? Uh, Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, could you give us an example of any current technologies that might be utilized? Uh, that's end to end encryption or encrypted?
Um, I'm not sure I understand uh technology with, in the Flock system.
Well, well, if there's just anything that you can point to that the layperson might be able to wrap their head around. Because I know that there are messaging services that are end to end. So I'm just wondering if there's anything in particular that you might be able to point to that would be similar.
Oh, you know what? I am not. Um, but I can certainly uh reach out to our I T team and, and get something that might help clarify that or kind of uh clear up that picture.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything further? Councilmember Castellano?
I, I don't have a question for Flock, but are we just open to general questions right now?
Actually, yeah, she just wanted to pause for a moment.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think we're done with our questions now, Kristen. Did you have something further?
No, thank you so much for your, for your time. We appreciate the opportunity.
So we are open to questions. Councilmember Castellano?
Okay, thank you. Let's see. This is a question for City Attorney Luna, I believe. Um, and it's about the policy itself. Um, and, and perhaps a slight amount of clarification. You know, I noticed for our recommended action is to improve the, approve the actual implementation and authorize the contract. Do we currently have a policy on record for uh, for automated license plate leader, readers?
I believe the answer is no. This would be the policy that would go into place along with other police policies. Um, but currently I don't think we have an existing A L P R policy.
Great. Um, and you know, and just appreciating, appreciating your diligence, Chief, in terms of, you know, getting a lot of input on this policy. Would there be an argument to be made for implementing a policy that would govern these even without authorizing the implementation or a contract? In terms of, you know, having one on record for uh, you know, if, let's say in two years, someone else brought this forward, there would already be a documented policy?
I think that you could put an A L P R policy into place without putting A L P R into place. Um, but the chief might want to talk a little bit about the difference between council policies and, and police policies. If the council wanted to put a policy into place, I'm not sure it would be identical to this one. Chief, do you want to field that?
Good evening. Uh, as far as me approving this or getting this policy approved that's been presented to you tonight and placing it into our Lexipol manual without the, an A L P R system within our department or the use of an A L P R system by our department, the policy would be mute. Um, and I try to prevent having policies in my manual that we don't have the equipment for or we don't adhere to because then it gets convoluted if the public wants to look at those on our website. Then it's like, why do you have this policy? Are you hiding things? If I don't have a technology, there's no reason for me to have the policy. And I have something on the books for two years and if it come back and it passed later, the, the chances of case law changing, the chances of state law changing, we would have to rewrite the policy and make sure that it was current and updated anyway. So it'd be just creating work down the future that wouldn't be worthwhile.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then, you know, one of the arguments that has been made is that, you know, of course, there are already lots of cameras in use in the community in terms of uh Flock cameras being used by the county sheriff's department. Um, you know, things like green cameras. Um, do you, uh, do you know the, you know, which I know when you first brought this forward, that was kind of news to me that, I mean, not green cameras. But do you know the extent of, could you, I guess, talk a little to the extent of use of Flock cameras already in the community?
Uh, to my knowledge, the only agencies that have cameras within Hummel County are the Hummel County Sheriff's Department, which I believe they currently have six in place throughout the unincorporated areas, mainly of the city or of the county as a whole. Uh, the Rancheria in Blue Lake just signed a contract with Flock cameras, I think for eight total cameras, six on the resort or on the Rancheria. And then two are going to be donated to the sheriff's department to cover Highway two ninety nine outside the Rancheria to assist them. Um, but as to my knowledge, those are the only agencies within the county that have that. So you're looking at, it's at twelve, thirteen, fourteen cameras, but in a very large geographical area, just not a lot of coverage. And then the Rancheria is a, a location of its own.
Thank you. I might have other questions while other council members speak. Councilmember Bauer?
Thanks for being here, Chief, and um, thanks for presentation. First, I just want to thank you and on, I'm looking at the policy four twenty six, um, forty, four two six point three, where we talked about um, that this, this technology would not permit um, the sharing of information on, on immigration enforcement under the California Values Act. I appreciate uh, that being put in there. Um, but I had a couple of questions on administration, four two six point four. There's something I just want some clarity on. It says towards the bottom of the paragraph there, the first paragraph. It may also be used to gather information related to active warrants, homeland security, electronic surveillance. What is electronic surveillance? What is that referring to?
I think there are different types of electronic surveillance. Um, there are investigative tools that certain agencies have access to that with a search warrant can be placed on vehicles, cell phones. Um, so they're utilizing that surveillance from electronic means through a technology means to surveil a particular suspect, but that has to be done due to Fourth Amendment rights through a search warrant. So it has to be approved prior by a judge before any of that stuff takes place.
Okay.
So if they then had that information and then asked for assistance in confirming that information, then that would be something that could be provided.
Okay. And then on um, four two six point three point one um, E, says the purposes of process for and restrictions on the sale, sharing or transfer of uh data. I just want to understand the sale. I mean, there's no intention of selling this data, data, right? It's just something that we have to include in the policy?
That is correct, sir. It's just wording that was put in there by the attorneys for Lexipol. But it's not, uh, there's no intention to sell any data off of any type of information we gather through any system we have.
All right. Thank you for that. Um, one more thing real quick. Um, under four two six point four operations B, um, it says an A L P R may be used in conjunction with any routine patrol operation or criminal investigation. Reasonable suspicion or probable cause is not required before using A L P R. Can you just explain what, what that means?
Well, in the case of a missing person or we don't have a crime to search the license plate of a missing person, we wouldn't need probable cause or reasonable suspicion to do that because we're not investigating a crime. It means we can use the system for other avenues to search out vehicles or especially specifically license plates that we already have that are not connected with crimes if they have to do with certain other aspects of a law enforcement mission. And so we don't need reasonable suspicion or probable cause to search a missing person's license plate. If they've been officially listed as a missing person or report has been taken, then we can use that technology to help track them down.
And that's a really, I think, an important part of this, right? Is like an Amber Alert, the ability to try and find somebody who might be kidnapped or, I mean.
Yes, and if you and Yes, and if you notice, you know, the Eureka Police Department does monthly updates on missing persons cases. We take a lot of missing persons report. A lot of those have been in the news lately. And we have license plate numbers for a lot of the missing persons vehicles. And we can use and have used this type of equipment and systems throughout the state of California to try to help loved ones find their family members that have traveled or have been missing or we know where they were last going. At least we can tell them we know they passed City X, and after that, they never showed up on another camera. So I would start your search there, and we can contact those agencies to get their assistance in these type of investigations.
Thank you. I'll let somebody else go. Thanks.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, what specific types of crimes are we trying to address with the Flock cameras in Eureka?
I don't think there is a limitation on the crime. If we have somebody that's been victimized and we have information that we can search that can put us into a position to contact a suspect or to solve a crime, I don't think there is a level of crime that doesn't deserve that attention as long as one of our community members have been victimized.
Are there any alternative or complementary strategies that could be used aside from Flock cameras?
I mean, currently, we take whatever information we can get from an investigation, and we put what's called a be on the lookout for countywide, statewide, whatever the demographic is that we need to search based on the information we have in an investigation. But that requires manpower from law enforcement to not only remember the information that was put out over telecommunications, but then to actively see that vehicle and find it, be able to stop it, and conduct the investigation. So that's kind of how it's done now. Is we put out wanted people's names, vehicles, stolen vehicles, all through telecommunications to every agency in the region. And then they search for those vehicles and those people through that type of process, which is manpower intensive.
Okay. And I know you've referred to, and our staff has as well, for how this is a force multiplier. So how's that being defined? Is it one-for-one? Is one camera equal to one officer then? Or how does this work then if we're having access to the FBI database or any of that with the use of AI?
Well, we're not using AI at all.
I'm sorry. It's, yeah, I didn't mean to say it like that. With the use of the software in the...
I'll give you a couple of examples. One, a really horrific investigation that happened on Fourth Street, right in the middle of the broad daylight, and an individual was set on fire. Suspect left in a vehicle. Broad daylight, middle of the week. I had every asset that I have in the city there. It took us three hours to search surveillance cameras in that area to find a photograph of the vehicle. Then it took another three hours for officers to scour the city of Eureka to find that vehicle parked somewhere and arrest that suspect. So it took us six hours and multiple men, men and women in power, my forensic analysts, everyone was out there trying to get this information. So if you think that, you know, we took this information, we were able to get this surveillance, we got a license plate or a vehicle description, we put it into the system. I know it hit on a camera that was located at 14th and Broadway, but it didn't hit on a camera at Henderson and Broadway. Now, I take all my assets and I send them to one smaller area, and we conduct a more thorough search, and we take that three hours. And maybe we cut it down into an hour, and this individual wouldn't have had any chances to hurt anyone else. So it helps us focus the manpower that we do have and the right place to get them to the suspect in a lot quicker timeframe. And then in other investigations, you look at it that, you know, we can give direction to travel, thing like that, if it left the city. So we're not searching the entire city. We're not having agencies like Arcata, Cal Poly, searching for vehicles that we know went south. And we can focus our efforts. The other example I'll give you is we have an operation within the county in the event that we need to shut down the county due to search for a particular vehicle. And it really does try to cover every aspect of ingress and egress to the county. And we used to practice this when I was a younger officer in the state. It's a state process. It's a state-county-wide shutdown. And they would give us a vehicle description, a license plate, and it usually had a little decal of a rabbit on it. And that's all the information we got. We were dispatched to these locations, and we had to watch for that vehicle. So you had to take your officers off the street, put them in this location. They watched for that vehicle, and it was going to traverse the city. We actually knew it was coming, and we had to find it. With Flock technology, we had that license plate. I wouldn't have had to put officers out in five different locations, let's say, in the city. We would just wait for it to hit one of the cameras when it came through the city, and we would have focused our efforts on that area and been able to find the vehicle a lot quicker. So if I don't have persons to cover all those ingress and egress points because of calls for service, and we've had a murder happen out in the county, and they know they're traveling this way, and they want to shut down the county to try to find that car, cameras then take the place of an officer actually manning one of those ingress and egress points, and we know if we get a hit, we can focus our attention on those locations.
Okay. Now, going back for a moment to the, to the first incident that you had just highlighted there. This was using private surveillance cameras. What kind of cameras were being utilized at that time?
Yes, the businesses, residents, cameras that are located throughout our city and that are generally on our camera list that people have offered to us that if we need them, to contact them, and they will provide us the video.
Okay, so we already have a list, kind of a centralized list of people who have cameras that operate?
We have a site on our website that if you want to register your cameras with us, then we put them in our system. That helps our detectives narrow their search. We know which houses have cameras. We can start there at least to try to get information from people we know that are going to cooperate with us and try to help us.
Okay. So then this is going to preface another question, but at least of the folks on that list, how many cameras are active then?
Oh, I honestly, sir, I apologize, but I don't have an answer how many have registered in our system.
And then you may not have this information because I don't either, but throughout Eureka, then, at least cameras that are operated at least by us or by third-party vendors, the Lock Cops, those type of things, how many do we have?
So we only have four Lock Cops, and Lock Cops are mobile trailer camera, trailer camera trailers that we use to address crime and different issues throughout the city. They can be requested by businesses, or they can be placed on city property. Currently, there's one at Carson Park. Currently, there's one at the new Diaz Park, 20, the old 2030 Park during the construction. And those are put there to address that. So they have to be moved around, and they're not real time. So they're collecting video that if we have a crime in the area, then we have to go back, make a request to the company to pull specific timeframes off this camera and get that video. So it's a very long process to get that. The only other camera the city owns is a stationary camera at High Tank at our fueling station, water station, electronic area up there.
Okay. And then this particular question might go back to Flock if that's okay. Okay. Talking about the software, then, how does it distinguish between vehicles versus people or bicycles? Anything that's moving? If the focus is on vehicles, how does the software do that?
Thank you so much for that question. So the cameras are motion activated, and if by chance a pedestrian was walking by, it is possible that the camera would capture an image of a person. However, it's really important to note that in the system, there is no way to search for a person or any sort of demographic information. It's solely vehicle attributes such as make, model, color, vehicle-focused attributes. There is no way to search for a person whatsoever. And then unless an image is retained by the police department as part of evidence in a criminal investigation, those images are hard deleted and unrecoverable at that 30-day mark.
Okay. And that 30-day mark, that's less, because there is no standard in the industry. It's simply something that's followed by practice, correct?
Correct. There is no national standard. We set that 30-day standard. Some jurisdictions opt for a year of data retention. Some opt to go for a shorter data retention. We made 30 days our default because it really provides the balance between the community's privacy, but also providing the department investigative values. So Chief had mentioned early on, you know, if if there is a crime that occurs and a victim may not be ready to report that crime, it provides that window to still be able to obtain objective evidence. And then in a situation of a home burglary where the owner may be out of town and isn't aware of the break-in until, you know, weeks, days, weeks later, it still provides the officers the opportunity to look for critical objective evidence. They have that 30-day window. But again, hard deleting and making the images unrecoverable at that 30-day mark unless it's retained as part of a criminal investigation.
Thank you. The next few questions I have relate to policy. And so I know, Chief, you've already outlined the process for, or what's been developed, you know, with Lexipol, having talked to Flock themselves. And so I'm curious, what collaborative efforts have been made between those parties and our city attorney and EPD? How has our city attorney been involved in the process and the development of this policy? Or has it just come from Lexipol?
Well, it comes from Lexipol. It came with input from the independent police auditor. And then the city attorney has provided some recommendations or some highlights after the draft policy was put on the agenda for me to review.
Okay. And so then this particularly for you, city attorney, what is your role in this process then if we have Lexipol to defer to?
Well, as the chief has mentioned, Lexipol is ubiquitously used by law enforcement as a template for any policy that they might need. But that doesn't mean that we use it wholesale without modifications. As the chief mentioned already, the policy that came before you was an amalgam of some other policies that are out there being used by cities similar to ours, as well as additions based on recommendations that came from the cop board or the IPA. And the chief is right. I did make some additional recommendations on Friday that can be implemented if appropriate, depending on the council's direction tonight.
Okay.
And I would just like to clarify, and I don't mean this with any disrespect whatsoever. Police policies are written by police agencies. I can take input, and I will in half take an input and add those concerns to the policy. But in the, and then in the end, it really is the police chief signing off on this policy because I'm the one that's going to be responsible for upholding this policy within the agency. So I just want to I'm happy to take recommendations. I'm happy to look at them, but by no means am I bound to add all of those to a policy that is going to go through Lexipol.
And then what were the recommendations that were offered on Friday, and what were the recommendations from the cop board from their meeting? Were they the same, or did they differ?
Well, they differ. The cop board's recommendations that I did implement into the policy was they wanted us to report back on an annual report, whether that was a part of the Eureka Police Department's annual report. Or as me and the city manager discussed, adding it to our surveillance policy ordinance annual report that we have to do based on the Lock Cop cameras already. And then the other one was just to make sure that we have language in there to do at least one audit a year on the system and how the system's being used. So that word "at least" is in there and gives us the opportunity to do one, three, as many audits as we choose as an agency to make sure that we're looking for those issues and addressing any concerns that do come up.
And then what were the recommendations offered on Friday by the city attorney?
There were a number of recommendations that were based on state statute that dictates how ALPR is implemented. And the template that Lexipol provides obviously tracks that to a great extent as well. But there were some additions that that I did recommend on Friday that I can forward to council if they're interested.
Okay. Could you please?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And then I only have two more. I was like, I only have two more.
So you had several. So you have two more. So Councilmember Molton, do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
Oh, yes, I have lots of questions. Thank you. Okay, so let's start with this one. When a vehicle is on the hot list, so someone else somewhere is looking for a vehicle, and they ask EPD, has this vehicle been seen in Eureka? What information do we get? I see department member's name, case number, and short synopsis as things that we have to report. Is that what the information you would see on the other end?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just want to clarify that a little bit. If a vehicle has been entered into the hot list, which means that a license plate has been entered into a system. So if one of the cameras that we have around the city identifies that vehicle and that license plate, then we get a hit on that vehicle saying that this wanted vehicle has passed this camera at this location. So it's not, you're not searching the hot list. Hot list is vehicles that have, you've already identified associated with a missing person or a crime that you've entered, and you're now you're looking for that hit, much like if I run a license plate that's on the hot list with my vehicle and run it through DMV, it's going to come back as stolen. So that's a little bit different than just an overall search. But yes, the overall search, I watched one today. A form pops up, and it doesn't matter what agency it is, the same form pops up. It asks you for the reason for the search, the case number at the top, and then you put in the identifying information that you want, and what you get back is potentially a photograph. You get a photograph of the back of the vehicle and with the camera information where that vehicle was seen. So yes, that would be the same for any agency that searches the system. The search criteria, the user interface, it was called, looks the same for all agencies and require to put that information in there.
My question is about if we have cameras and our cameras are collecting the data, and we are the only ones who can unencrypt that data. I want, my concern is whether or not we have control of that. It sounds like the, from a technical aspect, we've got, you know, good potential for a good encryption there, even a very strong policy here. But if a vehicle is, someone else entirely is looking for a vehicle, and it shows up in Eureka, and there's a hit, is it you who sees that hit, or is it Flock who sees that hit?
Oh, it would be us. It would come through our communications.
And then when you see that hit, what information do you have about who is looking for that car and why and where from?
So much like that hit would be like if a stolen vehicle come up, it would tell me what type of vehicle it is, who the registered owner is, what agency reported it as being stolen and entered it into the national system, who any potential suspects were that were entered into that initial criminal case. That's, hits are completely different than just general searches because people have to enter information in there. And I think stolen vehicles is as close as I can get to explaining that because we already put those license plate into a national system that, you know, we list all the information about our agency, the date and time we took the report, if we have any suspect information, where the vehicle was stolen from, the license plate, all the descriptors of the vehicle, any special attributes of the vehicle. So when an agency gets a hit on a stolen vehicle, they get all that same information because that's what the dispatcher entered into the hit. And that's shared nationally. It doesn't matter where you're at. If your stolen car gets run by your agency, you get all that information from the entering agency.
I don't think I'm getting my question out correctly. If the vehicle shows up and there's a hit on the vehicle, then someone in our department gets a notification, right? And it says, hey, this vehicle that's on a list somewhere was seen in Eureka. And the way I'm reading this, it sounds like that we would be the only one who knows that at that point, right? And that it would be on EPD specifically, on you or your authorized designee to decide whether or not to acknowledge that or share that information with the agency that is looking for that vehicle. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, it's, and again, there are access to a lot of cameras in the state of California. It's up to the agency to allow access to those cameras. So there are agencies that have access to all the California cameras that Flock has through every agency through an agreement, as long as they adhere to the policy. So yes, that is possibility. But yes, if it was something specific, like, let's say, something from the out-of-state realm that's been presented as hypotheticals, yes, before we call them back, we would look at that hit and say, what's it one of for? What state is it? Can we share the information? No, because we can't share information outside of California, and to make that decision on not sharing that information.
Actually, that brings up my next question. You say we can't share information outside the state of California, and I've been looking through this. Of course, I'm not a lawyer. But the California Values Act, and we're kind of leaning on that as a protection, like the idea that we don't have to share information with folks who ask for it outside of our values. But it says, "A law enforcement official shall have discretion to cooperate with the immigration authorities only if doing so would not violate any federal, state, or local law or local policy." City Attorney Luna, am I correct that we don't have a policy around sharing immigration information on the books for Eureka? Is that correct?
I think that the that EPD does have immigration policy in their existing police practices. It is, I don't remember the policy number. I think it's 426. Chief, any chance that's right?
I think this one's 426.
This one's 426. I apologize. But yes, I looked this up earlier today, and there is some existing policy within the EPD's policies that speaks to the California Values Act. And has been updated since that went into effect in 2017.
Okay. I also see in the California Values Act, of course, there's a number of exceptions to this. You know, I'm going to articulate this question. Give me just a moment. I'll let someone else go.
Hi, Chief. Thank you. I just, I wasn't clear on something earlier, so I was wondering if I could just back up. Councilmember Fernandez was asking a question about recommendations that went through Attorney Luna and then asked if you could email it to us. Are those recommendations in our current policy that's in front of us?
No, they're not. And I did just email them to you.
Yeah, I saw an email come through. I just, I... Yeah, I saw an email come through. I just, I, so it passed through you, but we don't, that did not make it into the current policy in front of us?
No, they're not in there currently. Those recommendations came from me after this was published.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so, hang on a second. I'm sorry, I've got so many pages of notes here. I did have a question specifically about the phraseology under 426.2 definitions. D explains a hot list, a list of license plates associated with vehicles of interest compiled from one or more databases, including but not limited to. And then it mentions the NCIC. And then going down to 426.4, excuse me, I apologize. Let me get there for just a second. And it was talking about that sharing of information. I guess I was just curious if, 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 if how we're defining our, our hot list is we're compiling it from databases that are not limited to just local law enforcement, but it's coming from, the one, NCIC, is that the one that, it's the Department of Justice, right?
It's the state, or, you know, the State Federal Crime Center.
State and Federal Crime Center. Okay, yeah, I was thinking that was the one that was national. And so what we're saying is that information would flow to us from a national level, but we're not going to have it flow back out from us. So it come, we can get it in, but we're not going to be, because of how our information sharing goes, our state law, whatever, the California, whatever the heck, what was it called? There we go. That prevents it from going the other direction. It's not going to flow out.
Yeah, it matters. If you put a, if you put a vehicle in the hot list that's wanted, associated with a murder suspect out of Oregon, which is another state, and we find that vehicle, make an arrest on that, I have to notify that agency out of Oregon. I have their warrant suspect in custody and how I found that. Now, it's around the surrounding, the issues that were brought up last time around immigration, medical procedures, those types of things. You know, you make a request to the agency for information. Has you have any hits, or have you had any hits on this license plate? That's where the information does get shared back across state lines because it's not in line with the Values Act, it's not in line with our policy, and it's not in line with what we want the technology for. It's not of an interest of me to deal with those issues.
Okay, thank you. Another question that I had, and so I was looking at the variation in how long people allow things to be stored. I think New Hampshire's was like the shortest that I saw, and I think it was minutes. And then there were some that were like days. And I guess I was wondering, well, actually, that's actually just a point. Hold on one second. 426.4 says all installation and maintenance by the investigations commander or the chief's designee. But when I was watching the cops board meeting, it, the, I think it was our city manager, had said that Flock was installing and maintaining the cameras, and that that's why it was a $75,000 cost initially, and then $60,000 thereafter. So I was just wondering, in our policy, it says you guys are going to be doing that? Could you help me understand that?
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not doing that. Flock contract covers the installation, maintenance for the, all the cameras, all the poles that are needed for that two-year process. What this is, is that if there is any maintenance, if we have any issues with those cameras, the investigations commander is responsible for contacting Flock and being that liaison, a point of contact to deal with any issues under the contract, to make sure they get addressed.
Okay, yeah, because the way the language reads in here makes it sound like you guys are installing and maintaining it. Yeah, it does.
Imagine it like a project manager over a project. Somebody else is doing all the work. He's just managing the overall project.
That, that's all for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Bauer, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just would like to know what's the difference between the California Values Act, which was enacted in 2017, and Senate Bill 34, which I think was in 2016? And it basically says sharing plate information with out-of-state law enforcement is illegal. Is there a difference between the two? Are they, you know, force multiplier? I mean, it seems pretty clear that we can't, according to state law.
Well, yeah, I mean, they're different, but addressing, I think, the same concern that council is sharing. So they do work in tandem to form the basis of that, that basic tenet that we're not allowed to share information outside of the state in violation of either 34 or 54.
So I mean, I think that's been, that's a real issue for all of us, right? Is sharing information outside the state. Of course, realizing if someone's a violent criminal, we would want to help catch them. But when it comes to other things that California has different opinions on, we can't do it, right? And I think our policy says there's repercussions for that if you or your designee were to do that, correct?
That is correct. If anybody is utilizing the system for any impermissible uses, then just like any other discipline with a violation of policy would be initiated an investigation, and they'd be held accountable for their actions.
That's great. Thank you. One last thing. I know, you know, there's been a lot of questions for you, Attorney Luna. I know we got a memo on Friday. That's a privilege. But how come we didn't get your recommendations? I mean, that's an important part of this discussion, right? And it seems to be that that should probably happen before we got to this point and all these people came, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I agree. This was a very quick turnaround from when the cop board heard this item on Tuesday to when this item was on the agenda on Wednesday. So I was not able to get recommendations to the chief ahead of that time. And the chief and I haven't had a chance to come together and, and agree on those recommendations. So generally speaking, I'm not going to present things to the council until we've come to an agreement at the staff level. And there simply hasn't been time for it. So I'm willing to share those with you now at the direct request of Councilmember Fernandez, and I've done that. But that's, that's my reason.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Bergel, City Manager Slattery.
City Manager Slattery, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I just want to provide a timeframe for what we're talking about here. This was presented to you guys on October 1st of this, of 2024. On October 4th of 2024, all staff, including the city attorney, received the policy on October 4th, 2024. It was discussed at our department head meetings, every department head meeting between then and now. And then it was provided again on January 22nd, 2025.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano.
Thank you. Just one more quick follow-up question. Just because the, the use of private cameras came up. Do we currently have a policy related to how we engage with using privately-owned cameras?
Not from a department's standpoint. We will inquire with the owners of cameras, see whether their businesses are residential, and ask if they're willing to check their video for any surveillance of a crime or anything that we're looking for. And if they are, and they're willing to provide that to us, they do it on their own will. And then we just collect that as evidence and keep it as evidence.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton.
Thank you. So before, I was conflating two different questions, so I'll narrow it down. In 426.3, under policy, the last paragraph, it says, further pursuant to government code, section 1798.90.55, a public agency is not permitted to share license plate reader information with private entities or out-of-state federal agencies. So I looked up 1798.90.55, and it says, it refers to the requirement for having a public comment before initiating a system like this. And then it also says, a public agency shall not sell, share, or transfer ALPR information except to another public agency, and only as otherwise permitted by law. Does that mean, what law is preventing us from sharing it with other agencies? And if the answer is California Values Act, then I have another question. Either of you.
What law is preventing us from sharing it?
So in the policy, you're, it's, it's, says pursuant to this specific government code. So it's citing this government code as the reason, as the protection, as the way that we are going to not have to share this information. And when I look up that specific code, it says, we don't have to share it. We don't have to sell it, except to another public agency, as long as, and only as otherwise permitted by law. So as long as we're not breaking the law, according to this policy that is cited in, according to this law that is cited in the policy, we have discretion to share the information, as long as we're not breaking the law in doing so. So what is the law or policy that is actually preventing us from sharing information with outside, with another public agency as permitted in the code that is cited in the policy?
I don't know that I have an answer to that minus the government code that you just read.
But it doesn't, it says that you are, we are permitted to share it, that we can, to another public agency.
And that's a California government code. So I would take it that it's referring to other public agencies within the state of California. As California code doesn't refer to the sharing of information with federal agencies. And it talked about private entities.
So because it's a California code, when you talk about public agencies, it refers to other California.
Unless it's otherwise noted that specifically says a federal agency or something to that nature, then they're referring to what happens in the state of California with the agencies in the state of California.
Since it's a Californian, got it. Okay. I'll come back with the other one. Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Aside from these meetings, what community outreach, if, if any, has been done with city residents or community organizations?
It's all been conducted within those council chambers and the council meetings and the cop board last week.
Okay. And then going back to the policies now, can you tell me more about the audits, how they're conducted? And I understand the timeframe is for yearly audits, but is there anything that prevents them from being done twice a year or quarterly?
Nope, that's, the language in there says they will be done at least once a year. So that gives us the opportunity to do as many audits we can. The audit needs to be conducted on information collected over the last six months. The audit will consist of 10 random searches pulled from the audit log and to ensure that those 10 searches have met the criteria behind the policy or the, the user utilizing the policy and the procedures correctly to do those searches.
And then my last question for now, anyway. When there's not an active case, would the recordings or footage be subject to a Public Records Request Act?
I believe every piece of information that we have within the department or any public agency is subject to a Public Records Release Act.
So do we have any, Councilmember Moulton?
Still just trying to wrap my head around the California Values Act because it's, so a law enforcement official shall have discretion to cooperate with immigration authorities only if doing so would not violate any federal, state, local law or local policy, and where permitted by the California Values Act. And then there's a long list of exceptions for both federal and state agencies to request information, including things like obstruction of justice, gang-related offenses, soliciting the commission of crime, kidnapping, all of these sound, and several other things like about violent crime and stuff like that. But these, am I right in understanding that there are exceptions to the California Values Act where we would have to turn over information about somebody being in Eureka or being seen on our cameras?
I believe what we would turn over is the fact that a suspect in a crime, because what you're mentioning is criminal activity that they are investigating. And that subject is a subject of a crime, then yes, we could provide that information if necessary to prevent or to execute an arrest on that subject. Additionally, if a federal agency came to us with a court order, a subpoena, a federal search warrant, then they could also have access to that as we would have to comply with those because they came from a judge, not from an agency themselves.
My next question. Thank you for answering that ahead. So if the, if we had a subpoena, then we would have to turn it over, regardless of whether or not the city of Eureka or even the state of California agreed with the nature of the charge?
On face value, I would say yes. And if there were any legal concerns surrounding the authenticity of the subpoena or the legality of the subpoena, then that would be something that would have to be heard in court through the city attorney.
Just out of curiosity, City Attorney Luna, what would happen if the city of Eureka got a federal subpoena for information and then refused to turn over that information?
We could be subject to court sanctions at that point. So with a judicial warrant for the release of information, I think the city would be beholden to that warrant.
So I got my head around this correctly. So we can, if we are gathering this data, even if we can encrypt it, even if we have policies in place that say who we do or do not want to share it with, ultimately, there is a law higher than Eureka and higher than the county and higher than the state that can force us to turn over, unencrypt and turn over information that's gathered here in the city.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's right. And I think also that there are ongoing and existing and very new cases related to the sharing of this information between federal and state agencies. It's a very, it's a very hot topic. It's a ripe issue. So can we say with 100% certainty that there will never be any sharing outside of the city's intent? No, of course, we can't say that.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Any further questions? Councilmember Condorist Deloche.
Hi, thank you. One of the questions I had is, we've been discussing this 30-day timeline. And what I'm wondering is if you need the camera footage, so, you know, to build a case or whatever, are you able to keep and maintain that footage then for longer than 30 days at that point?
Yes. So if we do a search of the system or get a hit on a particular vehicle, we then would download that image or get that image from the system as part of that hit. We would take that image at that point and place it into evidence, and we store it within our evidence system so that when the hard copy of that image is deleted at 30 days, we have retained the evidence that we need to help prosecute a case that that evidence was used in.
Okay, thank you. And then I, I did see when I was watching the cops board that one of the individuals had mentioned that they thought that we should be trying to do those audits every six months. And so I appreciate, you know, the acknowledgement that it, at least once a year because they felt that that was important. I did, going back to Councilmember Moulton's point now has got me wondering about having questions. Obviously, state to state, we have different laws. And this was kind of the concern that I had, this was one of the concerns I had brought up back in October. And that question was, obviously, when we're talking about a murder or rape or whatever, there's certain crimes that we can all agree on are crimes. But I guess my question would be, what happens state to state when we don't agree on what a crime is? Because there are differences and discrepancies in there, so I am curious about, about that.
So I mean, if you're asking for my input on that, when you're looking at a crime, it's a crime. When you're looking at a crime that has to do with something that's surrounding what's already mentioned in the policy, whether it's immigration, whether it's reproductive rights, whether it's medical procedures for the, the process of, yeah, medical procedures, those aren't crimes to the city of Eureka. They're not crimes to the Eureka Police Department. And it's not information that we share. That's why it's explicitly spelled out in the policy. It's what I actually bolded out in the new policy that I drafted, I gave you, to set those topics aside, that I have no intention, the city of Eureka, the Eureka Police Department has no intention on sharing that information with anyone because it's not, it's not appropriate. It doesn't fall into line with the values of the city of Eureka, the Eureka Police Department, or the state of California.
No, I appreciate that. And I, I read it and saw your bolded area. I think the reason why I'm asking that is just because, you know, we, as, as we've continued to ask questions, we've found that, you know, it's the devil's in the details. There's those little loopholes here and there. And, you know, and I think Councilmember Moulton has highlighted a potential area where this would give, where there could be sharing of information, you know, perhaps that we, you know, are not comfortable with. So that's, I think, my question. And, and I didn't know if that was a question for you or Attorney Luna. What happens when it's a crime in another state, and, but it's not a crime here? And does our state protections prevent, uh, make it where that we are empowered to say no?
I mean, I think the answer to that is, is yes, with the caveat of the answer that I just gave to Councilmember Moulton, right? We can have our, we can have our values. We can put it in our policy. Of course, we can't guarantee with 100% certainty that there won't be other forces at play. But yeah, I don't think, uh, under this policy, absent those, uh, extraordinary circumstances that we would be sharing with another state because that state thinks it's a crime when we don't.
Thank you.
Nothing further? Okay, pardon me. So it's, um, six minutes to eight, and I realize that there's a lot of people here that would like to talk in public comment. We're so glad you're here. Um, but because it's going to be a long time of public comment, I think we're going to take like a five-minute bio break. Uh, and then we'll come back and listen to everybody. So, uh, we'll see you close to eight o'clock. Thank you, guys. In the end. Yeah, I go. Once everybody gets up here. All right. So I just wanted a couple of things with public comment, just so you're aware. So everybody gets three minutes, three minutes to say whatever you need to say. Um, again, I just want to do a reminder about the decorum. This is a very sensitive topic for a lot of people. So if we could please keep hand clapping or yelling or agreeing or not agreeing, all those things to ourselves, um, that would be really helpful. So everybody feels comfortable and confident and safe that they can share, um, their opinions here. Okay? Much appreciated. And why don't you come on up?
Hi, I'm Kylie Finch, Third Ward. It's really easy for me to assume good faith on behalf of council members because I know there's not a lot of gold or glory in this particular job. And that's why you've never seen me here before. But for this particular policy, I did review the proposed policy and the master services agreement with Flock. And I don't feel like it's a good fit for our city. And I need to ask you all to please vote, not just to table it again, but actually vote against it and not consider further contracts with Flock. Chief Stevens got right to the heart of my objection when he told the cop board that the data is stored in a secured cloud base. But cloud servers still have physical locations. I don't believe any of us know where that's going to be. It's certainly not in the contract. Um, and I think if ICE walks into a server room in Fort Worth or Iowa or Georgia, they're going to walk out with the data they came for. And moreover, Flock's going to decrypt that data for him. It is in the service agreement. The proposal the council is voting on tonight is built on the idea that California law and Eureka city policy against sharing this information with federal or out-of-state agencies will protect immigrants, protect healthcare workers, protect patients from overreach by bad actors who want to harm people who live here. But the truth is, once that data is out of the state, it could be subpoenaed by anyone and no one here or any PD would even have to know that it had happened. That's why Flock and Motorola are the two ALPR companies that the ACLU specifically recommends local governments avoid. Uh, and whatever ALPR company we do use, we need to include clauses in the contract uh, that no data will be stored or processed outside of California. The data will be purged in minutes, not days or weeks, specifying how data will be destroyed so it's not able to be reconstructed. And also specifying that we won't be comparing with any hot lists other than those provided by the city of Eureka. The contract being voted on tonight states that Flock may, and I quote, "May access, use, preserve, and/or disclose the footage to third parties if Flock has a good faith belief that such access, use, preservation, or disclosure is reasonably necessary." Uh, further, it states that Flock will comply with all federal laws, regulations, policies, including responding to any subpoena requests. Storing the data encrypted does not make a difference if upon receiving a subpoena, Flock decrypts the data. Given what we've seen out of Washington over the past two weeks, there's no reason to think that the national hot list will remain apolitical either. Four years from now, these lists are going to be full of Dreamers, doctors, and trans teens. Eureka does not want to have anything to do with Flock's national network. Please, vote not to table, but vote against approving the city manager to enter this contract. Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Kelsey. Come on up. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Tyler Martin, um, Second Ward. Um, I'm a registered nurse, uh, that has been working in this community for years. Um, and I just wanted to let it be known that hospitals and domestic violence centers used to be no-gos for immigration enforcement, but they're back on the table now. Payment processing centers for social security and government contracts used to be apolitical, but it looks like that's going to be a part of the political process now, too. That said, I don't know why anyone would think AI-enabled cameras won't be accessed by the feds as well. It seems like the best way to protect against that is to not install AI-enabled cameras at all. The data from any city-owned camera should not be hosted, or should be hosted in City Hall and never in the cloud. Even if I trusted Flock, I don't trust that they won't be subpoenaed and compelled to keep Eureka's data, even if we sign an agreement saying they'll delete it. I care deeply for this community and shudder at the thought of our community and the vulnerable population that I serve potentially being taken advantage of, whether that be intentional or unintentional. For that reason, I have to ask the city council to vote no on the contract with Flock. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Come on up, friend. Welcome.
Hi, um, forgive me. I'm really not a public speaker, but this is really important to me. Um, my name's Kendall Finch. I live in the Third Ward, right in the heart of Eureka. One of the reasons given for needing this lock system is to monitor who enters and exits Eureka. However, I'd barely be able to leave my house without being scanned. With the proposed camera locations from my house, I'd be scanned on my way to St. Joseph, Open Door, My Dermatologist, Planned Parenthood, CVS, Walgreens, Rite Aid, Safeway, Winco, ENF, The Co-op, Grocery Outlet, Target, Walmart, the DMV, Social Security, Food for People, and City Hall. We're told that the purpose of these cameras is to monitor who enters and leaves Eureka, so why do we need them blanketing the whole city? I'm strongly concerned for my neighbors from marginalized communities who are likely to be disproportionately impacted by increased surveillance. One of Trump's first initiatives in his last administration was an attempt to end deferred action for childhood arrivals. These are our loved ones and neighbors. They're folks who grew up in the US. If DACA ends, cameras like these make these folks easier to find and target. And a Flock contract specifically would put their data in the hands of out-of-state agencies we have no control over regardless of California law. This would be inconsistent with the spirit of Humboldt County's status as a sanctuary jurisdiction. Moreover, I'm concerned about the physical location of the data storage and processing. And I hope that the city council will ask Flock for us where the data is physically located when it's unencrypted for processing and the physical location it's stored long-term. Because the data must be unencrypted for image processing and checking against hot lists. And it seems that likely would happen outside of California. You hear a lot of people say that you shouldn't comply in advance with authoritarian demands. Building out this infrastructure and connecting it to the internet is building the infrastructure of authoritarianism. It's the ultimate form of complying in advance. With cameras in as many locations as are being proposed, even not being seen on camera could be used against Eureka residents. We need to keep the power in our community to make sure that everyone in our community stays safe. That's why I'm asking you to vote against approving the city manager to enter into a contract with Flock. Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Kendall. Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here to, to see the council against the ongoing, uh, flock.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you very well. Would you be willing to speak closer to the mic maybe?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
I'm here in, um, offense to the, uh, Flock cameras being put up in Eureka. And mainly my point is not just how it is stored, but who is looking over it. In October of 2022, in Keshi, Kansas, uh, uh, Flock's database was used, um, by a detective to follow his estranged wife's location across multiple towns over a course of a month. In 2023, um, also in Kansas, a chief of police was found using Flock's database to track down his ex-girlfriend using a police vehicle to follow and harass her. It's not just that it's going to be into the database and it will, and it will be most likely stored forever, but it's who is looking over it and can we trust them to be looking over all of these important areas? As the last speaker had shown, basically all of our Eureka. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Uh, my name is Georgina Quinn. Um, I am a Arcata resident, um, previously Eureka resident. Um, I just wanted to really like say thank you for everyone who just spoke. You had a lot of research about, um, the company and their practices and, um, the reality of our federal government at this time. And, um, I also just wanted to think about the budget and what we could do with that money if it wasn't going towards these, um, this. And also reflecting on my work, um, working with, um, tribal service providers and advocates. Um, and the reality that police in this town don't have training about even that, the fact that tribal EPOs, emergency protective orders are valid. Um, and so sometimes they will not enforce them. And so we really need to focus our efforts on doing more, um, diversity, equity, inclusion trainings, anti-racism trainings. Um, I think the police has a lot better use of the funds for, um, that they could be spending on instead of this project. And also, yeah, just I want to, um, echo that this is definitely compliance in advance, um, with an authoritarian government. And I, I know that you all have really, um, not that vision. And I, and I'm, I urge you to vote against this. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Come on up. Welcome.
Hello, thank you. Uh, thank you, council members. My name is Malcolm Riddings. Uh, I'm an Arcata resident, but I work in Eureka. Um, I would just like to recognize that, um, I think there are a lot of struggles with crime in Eureka. Um, and even the police department faces its own struggles. Uh, however, I don't approve of this policy and implementation of a flock as, um, some other people brought up the, uh, way more efficiently things before me as I just learned about this, um, topic today. Um, but one big one I did have is Flock says on their website that they use artificial intelligence to, um, like create these vehicle fingerprints. And so I'm just wondering like, again, yeah, where is that data being stored? Like, how are they getting that data in the first place? As well as, um, these, uh, pictures expire after 30 days. But what happens to this, um, data after 30 days? Um, like, is that data still be able to save, be saved past data? Um, I wanted to thank, uh, Councilmember Moulton for recognizing the fact that there are, uh, higher courts above Eureka that could easily subpoena any of this, um, data. And I'll just say that, uh, if we are to possibly in the future use ALPR, um, in, uh, technology, I think that we should go with a company that does not use artificial intelligence. And again, is located in California so that that data cannot be across, or accessed across state lines or federal. So I urge you not to, uh, approve of this two-year contract with Flock for the 21 automated license plate recognition cameras as well as to, uh, just, yeah, again, not enter that contract with Flock. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for being here, Malcolm. Hi. Good, welcome.
Hi, guys. My name's Scott Palmer. I appreciate you having time for me today. Uh, I've lived in Eureka for 15 years and unlike some mentioned, I love Eureka. Proud of it. Happy to be here. Hope I never have to leave. Um. That being said, I thought the chief made a lot of good points. He made it clearer to me than a lot of the things I'd heard. But I gotta say, I'm still wildly against it. Um. Uh, the gal said, you know, that, uh, everything's encrypted end to end. Well, that's half of what everything says. Every app, Apple claims it's encrypted end to end half the time. And there's always backdoors. There's always loopholes. And then I've been reading articles and watching videos online recently about where computers are going to right now. And the military currently is already having to go back and re-encrypt old data because of how quick are, like that new Google chip that came out, right? That can do things lightning fast, quicker than we ever predicted could happen. Now we have to go back and re-encrypt those things. So even if today's perfect encryption is, is wonderful, is it going to be that in six months? Is it even going to be that protective? You know, in a couple of months, depending. And that's the biggest concern for me. I, I don't need, there's plenty of people that are going to talk about all the national things going on and all that stuff. All very valid and all on my mind as well. But the bigger things I think is we're looking at a slippery slope. Sure. I mean, it's like, it makes total sense to me. Some murderers running down the street, great. Let's get all the cameras on them. Let's find them. Let's protect our community. But that doesn't stop nefarious things from happening. People bring up examples. I've seen those too. My concern is that we say, oh, this is fine. And then it's let us go a little bit further. Let us do this. Well, uh, and people keep bringing up AI. The chief was quite clear that these do not have AI in them right now. Doesn't mean that stuff's not going to be the next thing. Well, now it's inefficient. So we better get that in there. Well, we can't process it fast enough. You know, there's just a lot of things that once you put your foot into that realm, it's just incrementally can change. And even though I believe wholeheartedly in giving Eureka police everything they need to keep this community safe and to deal with the very significant issues that face us on a regular basis. I also think that what a friendly beep. Um, I also think that that being, that being said, ju- uh, the lineup and, uh, however you want to say it, who is in the police department changes because of time and age. So even though I believe full, wholeheartedly that the chief will run a tight ship and keep good eye on all this, I don't know who the next guy's gonna be. I don't know who's going to be in charge of it five years from now or 10 years from now. And I want to feel just as safe in 10 years from now.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for your time.
Mm-hmm. Come on up. Hello and welcome.
Hiya. Hiya, folks. Um, I'm also here because of the Flock safety AI. Um, I do want to point out that though they have, um, like quantified that the cameras will not be AI-enabled, it is still being handled by the same company that boosts that they are putting innovative futures and all this initiative into using AI. And, um, the company does not necessarily need to apply to everything when it's handling all of our data. Are we going to be able to stop them when we're already working with them and we're paying for their service and their contract? Um, especially because Flock's safety boosts that they can identify emerging threats, which, um, implies a much more active process of encrypting information, um, inputting information than was previously implied when they were saying that the software, um. Yeah, does not make law enforcement recommendations implying a completely like passive program, but they do boast that their company would be able to be doing in identifying emerging threats, which sounds like it's being a predictive choice, which feels like they're pushing energy into making it into a problem where it identifies problems can be anything and could lead to anything. And I don't think that's safe to, um, identify or, um. I also just don't think that the company, uh, should get our money when they're doing all this work in AI. I don't think the city of Eureka needs to be, um, encouraging the use of AI and the development of AI when it has such a high environmental cost. Um, we're right here on the coast. Like, the water rising and ocean acidification and stuff are real concerns for us because this is going to hit us quickly and hard compared to other areas. And I just think that, um, with the growing concerns of how AI consumes energy, we shouldn't be applying our money to a company that does that kind of stuff. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Nathan.
Hi, I'm Nathan. Uh I also grew up here. Uh I can't really put it any better than the very first commenter that 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 spoke about in opposition to the flock cameras. But I will remind everybody that this is a private company and they do not have to comply with any FOIA requests at all. Um the city attorney also brought up a good point that said, well, in what instances do we have to comply with out-of-state subpoenas or orders? And it was very ominous and it seemed vague to me. It said, other forces at play, that could be anything. Uh again, this is something, the company has access to this. It's a nationwide company. And uh it's really at their discretion. So even if we take like our local officials, our our police chief at face value, we still it's still, once this, the infrastructure's there, not only can the data that it takes just be sent elsewhere, it that those policies can change over time. And if those policies change over time, well, you know, it's a lot harder to get rid of the stuff once it's already implemented here. And someone brought up the fact that we already have these. I didn't even know that we had flock cameras in use here. We already have them. So again, I think we have enough. We can draw a line right now and be like, you know, we're crossing the line and be like, okay, I don't wanna live in Minority Report. That's not my thing. Um you know, I don't, I'm trying to think of really who this benefits and I think it doesn't been any fit anyone as much as it benefits the company. And I'm trying, I tried to put myself in the headspace of someone that maybe just watched Minority Report or read Nineteen Eighty-Four and they were like, yeah, sign me up, let's do it. Um so no, please don't do this. Vote no. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan.
Hello and welcome back, Ms. Caus- Councillor.
Hey, guys. Um Pat, Mario's Ward. I'm an RN here. Uh first of all, I wanna say Flock is a private company. Everybody's been saying that. I think the more we say it, the better. There's a lot of people here and you're gonna hear a lot of things and a lot of them is gonna be repeated and it's all true. They upload data to the cloud and they make a profile. The data goes to the National Crime Center, to the DM, California DMV, via local lists, but there is no oversight. This is a private company. All right? So things are going to go to the cloud and Flock will do what it likes. There is a master agreement signed by the city and Flock. It says Flock may access, use, or preserve the data. The police say, no, but this is a private company. Um, okay. Everybody's spoken about all these technical aspects and you're gonna hear that. Well, I wanna give you something personal here. Okay? I'm a criminal. Okay? According to Trump, all right, people, and he is going to say this, people who protest for the Palestinians or people who protest for the environment are going to be terrorists. Anybody can label a terrorist now. You don't have to be one, but boy, they can just call you one. So I'm a terrorist and I'm a criminal. I'm concerned about my rights, my Fourth Amendment rights. And if I do become arrested, I'll do a Trump. I'm just gonna sue the city of Eureka and sue every one of you. If I have to pay a fine, you can pay the fine. I'm not gonna pay the fine. Uh, okay. Anyway, that's joking aside. No, it isn't joking, really. I am gonna do that. I'm seventy-one and I go to work. I'm still working as an RN. And I tell you something, I don't need this stress. I don't. And none of the people here do. They have rights, just like all of us. We have Fourth Amendment rights. And this private company, I mean, look at paid nine eleven, then the Patriot Act, then Patriot two-point-oh, then censoring our speech. Hey, they're cutting our rights away little by little. Pretty soon, we're not gonna have any at all. And if you get this flock system, where our rights are being thrown away. Um, oh, this thing. Okay.
You'll have thirty seconds.
To sum up, the system will send its data to whomever it asks for it. So please remember that. And one other, or two other things. Edward Snowden, permanent record. What he meant was, once it's in the cloud, it's not going away, honey. And the other thing is, and I hate to say this and probably people are gonna be pissed at me, but uh I trust the cop as much as I can throw him.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hi there. Uh my name's Ken Rustio. I live in uh Ward One. Um you certainly touched a nerve with this and the timing, given what's going on at the federal level is probably yeah, inauspicious for this kind of an effort. Um I have, I work in biotech, in uh in cloud computing. And um I am deep in the belly of all of this stuff and uh so it's kind of hilarious to hear somebody mention AWS KMS keys. Like, I was just dealing with those four months, four hours ago for a living. Uh the devil is indeed in the details. I've been chasing this devil for thirty-five years and I'm kind of tired of it. Um the um uh in biotech, I work in a very heavily regulated industry. Um we are, we got a lot of training about PII and about how to keep it safe. There are a lot of internal rules within these corporations that are my clients. Um we take it very seriously. We get a lot of training on it. I don't know what kind of, I'm just ignorant, sorry, I'm coming new into this, um what kind of regulations or what kind of policies exist within Flock. Um without seeing them, I don't trust them. Um and um I can answer where the data is. It's probably in US East One, which is Northern Virginia, or US West Two, which is Oregon, or possibly US East Two, which is Ohio in AWS. Um and I don't know if they have multi-tenant, um if the if they have access to the data in addition to the city having access to it. I appreciate a lot of work has gone into this. I I can, I can hear it, I can see it. Um and a lot of research, but there's a lot more details that you you may not be aware of. I was a little disturbed to hear that Palo Alto, oh, sorry, Menlo Park turned down Flock. Um I used to work in Palo, in uh in Palo Alto. I used to work in Menlo Park. I used to commute there every day. It's a very modern, not a Luddite city at all. If they turn this down, I would recommend the city staff and council maybe contact them uh directly and ask them uh off, you know, off the record and candidly why they didn't do that. East Palo Alto, which is right next door to Menlo Park, about twenty years ago installed the gunshot cameras. Um and it was a high-crime area and it was very successful to put the gunshot cameras in. And so that was a big success in adopting that technology. Uh why they turned these down, I don't know. But it gives me some pause that they that they did. Um obviously, they had some concerns. I don't know what they are. Um speaking of, of thirty seconds, I also was a little concerned to hear that this is all moving so quickly all of a sudden. It sounds like it's been in the works since October, but I guess all of this kinda is taking shape in the last two weeks. Might be worth putting the brakes on it or just saying, let's not do it at all. It sounds like the time isn't right. So that's would be my request of the council uh is to to not do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Come on up. Hi there, welcome.
Good evening. Hello, I'm Ryan Lilleton and I would like to um basically give my thoughts and um disapproval of the use of Flock. Um this software can track vehicles through license plates, make basically rat out, basically make routes, including bumper stickers, like, like I said, license plates, and et cetera. Um uh Flock, you guys said that um the data is deleted in thirty days, but um any ongoing investigations can be accessed with it. And I think that opens up a can of worms that would be very dangerous, definitely during this administration. Um and yeah, and I think it would, yeah, it's a very creepy, weird system, I would say. But um yeah, that's all I have to say and thank you.
Thanks for being here, Ryan. Come on up. Welcome to you.
I think a lot of folks have talked um very effectively about just the variety of different liabilities with uh national government, other state governments conflicting policies. Um but I think it's also important to focus on um potential issues with law enforcement here too. Um I read an article today, I believe it was in Redwood Voice, um that uh brought up that the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office is one of the law enforcement offices that have been contacted by pri- uh by um uh a number of civil liberties organizations um demanding that it cease sharing driver locations with uh out-of-state agencies. Um so that seems to already be something that is a concern locally. Um another thing is that was brought up in the article that uh was not coming to mind when I thought about Flock was that uh was the texting scandal, I believe, at twenty-twenty-one. Um which I hope all of you are familiar with. Um that was uh I I it, what came out was basically um that a number of police officers um with the Eureka Police Department were sharing um all kinds of horrific messages in this broad group chat that included many uh personnel. It included uh describing misogynistic sexual depictions of women and violence that they wanted to perpetrate against people uh doing peaceful demonstrations. Um it talked about sexual acts that they wanted to uh engage in with um houseless women um and them spying on different people um doing different things. Um basically, just a lot of really evil things, frankly. Um and what was really striking to me when that came out was that the Sacramento Bee was reporting this. It was anonymously reported to them by somebody, someone, and these text messages were from like a year ago or something at that time. So there were many people in the Eureka Police Department who had seen all of these messages and done nothing. Uh so for me to be expected to put my faith in a department that allows that kind of thing to happen, I I don't think we should be giving them more money for toys. I think we should be taking away their money and giving it to the people that were expressing concern about and the people who need healthcare, the people who are immigrants who are afraid for their rights.
Thank you for being here. Welcome.
Hey, Al, first word. Um obviously here against the flock cameras. Uh if you do a quick Google search on them, you'll see that specifically flock cameras are tied up in Fourth Amendment lawsuits across the country for violating citizens' reasonable expectation of privacy. And there have been plenty of criminal cases thrown out of court, finding that these are warrantless searches. That's honestly like, that's not even my biggest concern. I think we should be working towards repairing the relationship between the community and law enforcement. If you ask the general public what they think about these cameras, they'll tell you they think they're being spied on. This only builds community contempt for police and law enforcement, which is a dark path. And we should be working at building trust, not the opposite. Widening the divide between citizens and law enforcement benefits neither. The community feels less protected, more targeted. And without the confidence and participation of the community, police work then becomes significantly more difficult and more dangerous. I think that this would be a misstep in the direction we should be heading. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Come on up. Welcome.
I'm JR. I work in Eureka. I wanna appreciate everyone's time in laying out this plan and answering and asking questions. I've been hearing a lot of care, that people care about their community, they want to feel safe. The chief wants to make that happen. The how is what's in question. We have all these risks that have already been brought up. And not in the least, I've noticed a pattern that women are targeted, that when something can be used against them, it is without much reflection on what was enabled, how we got to where we are. We also think about women's healthcare in Humboldt County. There are too many struggles already. And especially with the closure of a labor and delivery unit at Mad River Community Hospital. We've heard from RNs and also other folks who are concerned about our local community's access with having increased um amounts of surveillance and that risk that people might turn away from healthcare, especially vulnerable populations such as pregnant women or women experiencing other issues such as domestic violence. One of the things with these cameras is that we have not seen that there are going to be results that are going to be local. Um we have not seen, you know, the the Chase ATMs, bank ATMs can't even stay functional. So how are we going to maintain these facilities? It's gonna be a private company. Are they local? Not likely. Continuing on as far as our community risk versus reward is that we want to see where these got mixed up a little there. Uh we see that these locations are being chosen around food locations, services, City Hall was another listed location. Um so we wanna think about who is going to be viewing these live uh cameras. Is that going to be a position within the Eureka Police Department? Much like a dispatch center? Will it be adding to existing um personnel? Um these are all kind of off the top of the head things that come up because the last time this was circulated was on January twenty-second. So we haven't had a lot of time to put together prepared statements. Um beyond that, um I know that other folks have brought up many other good points that I will be following up on myself and I hope that council does as well. And I also hope that the police department and chief, I hear how much they care and I want to hear that they have the resources they need to do good work. But this doesn't seem to be a option that is going to work for our community, for the current state and federal policies that we are complying with. And it doesn't seem that the community itself, on the reflections we have tonight, um want to see that this idea moves forward. And so I also ask that we do not uh approve this contract with the city. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for being here. Come on up. Thanks for being here. Hi.
Hi, my name is Allison. Um I'm here to impose the use of flock cameras in the city of Eureka and all of Humboldt County. Installing privately-run video cameras throughout the city without a public vote is not okay with me and will only create more fear and distrust in our community. I've never spoken at a city council meeting before and frankly, I'm shocked that I even have to be here to speak on this right now. Privacy is a human right and our laws are not protecting us. It's acts like this that make us feel more and more unsafe in our town despite a general decrease in crime across the nation over the past three decades. Installing these cameras will do more harm than good and will irreparably break trust in the city to defend the privacy of its people. This is a critical moment to decide where we stand in a city, as a city, in protecting the privacy of our people and choosing a path of sanctuary and not surveillance. I wanna live in a city that is proactive in protecting our privacy now and in the future. I wanna live in a city that fundamentally opposes mass surveillance and sees that its harm far outweighs its benefit. I wanna live in a city that realizes that public trust is a stronger tool than cameras in fighting crime. Instead of cameras, or installing cameras, it's only the beginning of a slippery slope, like like someone else had said. Um towards a paralyzing future where our fellow citizens fear they're being watched and no one feels, or worse, no one is, safe to be themselves. Um I also wanted to speak to a couple of points that were made um in the past couple of hours. One was about the um auditing and I'm curious why only one audit a year is what's currently in the policy, um considering all the concerns and the um questions about potentially doing more. Um it seems like it would be more prudent for that to actually be in the policy to have more regular audits. Um it also sounded like the audit includes ten searches. And from the very little research that I've done um into this topic, um I have a full-time job and I don't really have time to do this research. Um there's thousands, tens of thousands of pieces of data that are collected on this. Um so ten just seems really insignificant. Um I'm gonna scroll through all of my quick notes here. Um um I had a, just a couple more questions to pose to you. Um a lot of the people have spoken to as well. Given that the less than stellar track record that data protection has in this country by private and public entities, do you think it's possible that the police department may not even know if this data is being used maliciously once the infrastructure is in place? Um, let's see if I have anything else. Um I I just also wanna um strengthen what other people have said in that it seems like it's a pretty clear, um there's a pretty clear voice in the community um that it doesn't sound like the community was really involved in much of the process up to this point. Um and so the um the urgency doesn't really have to be.
Thanks for being here, Allison.
Appreciate it. Come on up. Appreciate it. Come on up.
Hello, my name's Eileen. I'm a born and bred Humboldt honey. So I have a different approach. All of you people are paying to have your license plate on your car. So you're making a choice to have your license plate taken by these people. So get a bicycle because I have paid to have license plates. No license plate on my bicycle. I, the city of Eureka has built a path to go from one end of the city to the other end of the city with no surveillance now. They have built traffic lanes that are for two cars, two lanes, but not the bicycle. That's got a free path up and down main streets. So that is my concern. Use the Bay Trail. Don't license your, your bicycle. It's not required. I just have another viewpoint of the same thing that I agree with everyone that has spoken tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Welcome to you.
Hello, uh, I'm a little nervous. Um, I feel like most of what has been said pretty much covered also what I wanted to say, um, on the topic of this. I don't really, um, want like more and more and more surveillance, and, um, I don't really want to like, it feels like, I don't know, sad to like, I don't know, keep like paying my taxes and like living here and like having all of this like stuff like put into place and like all over the country and stuff and like with like other like companies' track records of like, you know, whether or not they're using AI and stuff, but like still like funding like the use of AI and with like the failure rates on that and like the failure rates on like just general like using AI surveillance in conjunction with law enforcement and how like, just like the technology is really advanced, but also just like in a lot of ways like really like falls like extremely short, like I, different areas of AI, like identifying like black faces, like being like extremely like extremely unreliable and like I, like I just don't want it to be like applied to like so many different like aspects of like our lives. And also just like, it just seems like, like, a really like sweet deal for Flock for like us to be giving them money so that they can put up their cameras and store all of our data. And like, it sounds really convenient, but also it's just like, like, I, well, I just don't like it. I, I just don't, I just don't quite like being surveilled like so much and as much as is, is happening. And it seems like pretty much everybody, like whether layman or like in this like professional tech industry for like years and years, seems to be like unanimously like a, against this. Even people who are like in other towns and like cities and, um, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty completely like in, in opposition to this. And it seems like the majority of like a lot of people are as well. And, yeah, and I think that's really it.
Thanks for being here. You did fine. Hi.
Good evening. Um, I've been a resident of Eureka for several years, and I urge the city council members to vote no on the installation of the unconstitutional and highly invasive flock cameras. Um, as a city that claims to value the safety of its citizens, it's necessary to uphold each person's constitutional rights, including the right to privacy. Data collected through passive surveillance and hosted on private servers represent a huge breach of that privacy. The chief mentioned that any potential violations of this policy will be swiftly dealt with if installed. Um, some of these potential violations have been mentioned by many people here tonight, including the bypassing of county sanctuary policies for status-vulnerable community members and those traveling for reproductive healthcare due to external subpoenas, as well as the false identification of vehicles leading to innocent citizens being wrongfully accosted by law enforcement. These are devastating events for those affected, and simply having intentions to not share information of this nature doesn't guarantee that it will not happen. It would be a waste of resources to deal with these potentials as these violations aren't possible if the, if the policy is not voted into place. And it's unfortunate that the police department don't feel they have the ability to fight crime effectively without turning to the use of AI, which has been proven to be much less accurate than functions performed by people over a wide variety of disciplines. In many cities in which flock technology has already been widely implemented, there's been no significant reduction in crime or has even been a slight increase in the rate of crime. There is not clear evidence of the efficacy of these cameras to justify the risks and costs associated with them. And if flock cameras are already in use in this county, it would be beneficial to see reports on the efficiency of having them since they've been installed. Clearly, there are many community members that are passionate about civil engagement here tonight that very strongly oppose this policy. Aside of concerns around the sharing of data external to this county, the residents here also deserve protection from unnecessary and unwarranted surveillance. I hope that city council votes no on this policy and continues to help make Eureka a city people speak about with pride. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Hi. Welcome.
Hello, my name's Ursula Newman, um, and I just wanted to say my main point. This is a private data aggregation company. Um, as said by the chief of police, there's already eight flock cameras that are either already in use or planned to be installed, um, through like contracts with the Humboldt Sheriff's Department and the rancheria. So my question is, well, first, that's far more than enough for my liking. And my question is, why are these eight cameras and the contracts already in place with our sheriff's department not being seen as adequate surveillance that the Eureka Police Department could access and utilize in the event of an extreme emergency when someone is needing to be located, et cetera, et cetera? Anyways, I don't know all the legal terms on that, but I feel that eight cameras are already in use and really twenty-one more? That's a lot. We're a small town. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ursula. Come on up.
Hi, Haven, resident of Arcata. I don't want to be here talking. I worked a long day. I'm sure everyone has, but as you can see, I'd like to thank everyone here who like really cares about their community. And community care would not be having these cameras, as you could assume my opinion would be. Um, I want to ditto the concerns of there's no control of this data, like being subpoenaed and the implications of that and the harm that causes our community and our place being a safe place. Um, other states and the feds criminalize life-saving healthcare. Um, I don't need to say more on that. Again, ditto to lots of things everyone said. Again, ditto to statistically, these cameras, flock cameras, show no decrease in crime. It, it just doesn't happen. You create more criminalization. Um, and I have good faith that, in people, um, it's on. Regardless of policy, um, and the moral clause or whatever in that again, um, subpoenas. Um, and we have no control of, over those policies being broken. And, is it not local policy for police to not use excessive force? A policy we've seen again and again be broken with little to no repercussions to the policy being broken. Um, we don't need our money going to these cameras. Um, we need the money going to healthcare and our people and community, and these things are not for community. They, again, don't decrease crime, subpoenas, all that jazz. Um, thank you.
Thanks for being here. Come on up. Hi. Welcome.
I actually have some, uh, some contrary views tonight. As a proud fascist and one of your local constituents, I plead for you to vote in favor of the contract setting aside an initial one hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the increased surveillance of our local population. This surveillance is critical to ensure that nobody, you included counselors, gets any wise ideas. Local and federal law enforcement agencies, which have become wonderfully less concerned with our outdated constitutional privileges in recent years, are depending on you to make the right choice. Let, to be clear, let me outline the choice you have. Why spend one hundred and fifty thousand dollars on something as wasteful as public education, for example, when research shows that well-educated children just end up becoming unnecessarily critical of our faultless nation, the only free nation on the planet? And these so-called educated children, more often than not, grow up to become terrorists, supporting dangerous ideas like international law, human rights, and protecting the environment? And actually want to tell us that America might have problems and could be better. They even believe that it is our duty to actively improve this nation as if it isn't already perfect. It should go without saying, but these cameras will be critical to track and surveil these terrorists. Moving on. According to the Institute of Justice, our brave prosecutors and law enforcement agencies unconstitutionally and without due process steal more every year from the American public than all burglars and thieves combined. Indeed, I didn't know those were different things, but burglars and thieves are different things, and police steal more than both of them. They are obviously very well-educated on the topic of theft. In fact, I would argue they are experts when it comes down to it. When they tell us these cameras will help reduce crime and theft, why would you not believe them? In closing, I know law enforcement claims these cameras will be used to help track terrorists and thieves, but I think they should be honest with themselves, as well as all future generations and the public at large. They should be proud about the true purpose, intention, and capacities of these burgeoning technologies. These flock cameras are an Orwellian invasion of our personal and private sovereignty. Every single one of your constituents, regardless of their political affiliation or background, law enforcement officers included, will be harmed by this technology in the long run. With all due respect, if supporters of these flock cameras aren't being paid very well or threatened to put these cameras in place, they are either sadistic, incompetent, or purely malevolent. And I'm out of time. Thank you.
Yeah, five more seconds. Thanks for being here. Over on the side, please. Hi. Welcome.
I have a couple of questions for council this evening. Um, who here is familiar with House Resolution Twenty-Six? Show of hands, anybody? House Resolution Twenty-Six? This, uh, no from the council?
So, no, we don't usually answer questions during public comments, so you could email us, or we can ask after, uh, after a public comment.
Well, it is the House Resolution which says that if you are part of the anti-fascists, you're now a domestic terrorist. Um, so the, the other questions that I would pose to council, which I'm not supposed to pose to council, are, are you familiar-
You can post them, we just don't answer them right now.
Lavender, or where's daddy? Um, are you familiar with the implementation instances of surveillance technologies for the purpose of genocide, for the purpose of monitoring our borders, um, for the purpose of controlling our speech, for the purpose of controlling dissent? Um, I've watched, you know, the bombings of children for the last fourteen, sixteen months. Pretty tired of it. Um, I heard this council open with a land acknowledgement and the profession that they were against imperialism, and you were talking about implementing surveillance technologies within the city to track the movements of people that won't be used except for monitoring criminal actions, which, um, sorry, me and my nursing practitioner comrade are terrorists under the current administration, right? So when you talk about tracking criminals, who are you really tracking, right? We have laws on the books today which are talking about criminalizing the search for life-saving medical care for women. Our vice president is talking about it being murder to get an abortion in this nation, and that women should not be allowed to cross state lines. So when an Oregonian draconian law comes down that says no abortions in this state and someone comes to seek one in Humboldt, California, um, how will our police office act when it is asked to provide location data on the cars as they move about our jurisdictions? Um, seems like our national laws aren't secure, and we are criminizing, criminalizing actions, identities, and speech. I would urge council to vote a strong no and, um, not exacerbate the surveillance state. I'm shaking, I'm epileptic. This is disgusting, and I really, really, really hope that you guys have more foresight than this. Um, thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thanks for being here. Come on up.
Hi there. How you folks doing? Oh, no questions. Right, right, right. We'll try again, we'll try again. You guys are doing good, it looks like. Uh, I am a Eureka citizen. I vote here in Eureka. Uh, I live here in Eureka. I'm from Mendo County, and I'm not too worried about the bigger picture, you know? Obviously, you guys could be spending money on better things, but that's not my concern. You know, the government's gonna do what the government's gonna do. But what I will say is, I don't see why you guys couldn't spend money putting up your own cameras, if you really want to put up cameras. I don't really think that putting up cameras is gonna stop crime. I think, obviously, there's a lot of things causing crime here. And I don't think it's because there aren't cameras. People still clearly commit crimes when there's cameras around. I don't think anybody's gonna be doing much to stop that. And I think spending all that money for some big-ass tech company is, pardon my profanity, I'm sorry, uh, I think that's a waste of money. I think the money's going towards companies that don't have our best interests at heart. I don't think that these companies do anything good for our country, you know? And I think, you know, it does infringe on our freedom, but I think more than anything, if you want to spend that money on something, it shouldn't be to, going to a tech company, you know? Even if you want to survey, do what you gotta do. I don't believe in it, but I understand your reasoning. But I'm not gonna vote for people who are gonna spend our money on tech companies. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Come on up. Welcome.
Hello. Um, hi, I've never come to a city council meeting because I've never felt it to be necessary, but, um, I, I don't have anything else to say that hasn't been said already besides, um, adding another person to the count of those who are deeply against the use of flock cameras in Humboldt County. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Hey, come on up. Welcome, sir.
Hey there. Um, I'm Solomon Iverta, resident of Eureka here, and, uh, I hope you all were able to receive my, uh, email message from earlier today, just encouraging you to vote, uh, against adopting this, uh, program with the flock cameras. Um, I'm very, uh, happy to see so many people here tonight, and, um, I wish there were more people here on January fourteenth, and I hope that all of the folks, uh, can review that agenda and see what was on the agenda that night. Um, I meet every Monday night, um, at my bookstore to review the agendas of what's coming up. And last night, I was a little bit sad because I only had a few people there, and I was concerned that you all were going to have a preponderance of evidence set before you to encourage you to, uh, adopt this. And I'm glad to see that there are more folks here that are standing up to help you decide to not adopt this program. So, thanks for all your time tonight. I know it's a late night for all of us. I got two people sick tomorrow, so it's gonna be a long day tomorrow. Uh, but, um, thanks for all your work that you do here, and thanks, everyone, for coming.
Thank you, Solomon. Okay, so is there anybody else in chambers who would like to comment on this item? Come on up. Hi there.
Hi.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name's Lex Seber, and I am finishing up one of, uh, the amazing, uh, public comments. Um, so pretend that I'm them, but I'm also using my own, uh, public comment time. Uh, it should be, it should go without saying, but audits mean absolutely nothing when we are trusting potential corruptible agencies to conduct these audits. Given the long existing and rapidly increasing plutocratic elements within our government, can we have any guarantee that these technologies won't be misused? I will give you the obvious answer, no, there is no guarantee. If there is any potentiality for a technology to be abused by any agency or cor- uh, corruption, or agency or corporation, it comes down to our public representatives, in our case, this Eureka City Council. To use- to use their common sense and best judgment to ensure the people they represent are safe from technology, technological tyranny, and that our constitutional rights are protected from any and every possible incursion. And that was seen. Great job. I have a few minutes left. I wasn't planning on coming up here. My name is Lex, I use they/them pronouns. I have grown up in Humboldt County, was born here, know many of you here. I'm obviously in alignment with voting no on the cameras. And I also, I've, I've been doing all kinds of work specifically around health education in the county for about ten years, so almost a decade. And there is a connection between the, the work that I do and the overall advocacy for non-surveillance, you know? Most people know what it feels like in, on a micro level, on an individual level, what it feels like to be surveilled. It doesn't feel good, right? Let alone on a macro level or on a systemic or social level, when we know that populations, identities, peoples who are most vulnerable to social and state violence are getting even more surveilled. And so I urge everyone to think about that moving forward, not just voting no on this item, but also, in general, making sure that our community is leaning more towards caring for one another, holding one another, and not surveilling one another. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Welcome.
Good evening. I wanted to thank everyone who came out tonight to speak against the proposal to install these Flock cameras in our community, and that I am another person who is against this for all the many reasons laid out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, final ask. Is there anyone in the audience and chambers that would like to share? Okay. We'll move on to Zoom now, and we're gonna start with, is that Mike? Mike?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, good evening, and thanks for having me here, and I just, at the beginning, I want to say, you know, talking about Eureka pride, I'm so proud of all the thoughtful and intelligent commentary from my neighbors. So, I've been here for, I don't know, thirteen, twelve years. I live in Arcata, but I work often and travel multiple times a week in Eureka. I just want to say that even under ideal political circumstances, expanding the surveillance state is a bad idea. We are currently far from ideal political circumstances right now, with new upheaval and uncertainty around federal agencies happening daily. Do not spend a dime on more surveillance tech, not ever, but particularly not now, when budgets will be strained by evaporating federal grants, and law enforcement tools will be increasingly turned against citizen enemies du jour, whether they be migrants, activists, or people seeking healthcare. There are no reassurances that can be made regarding the misuse of this data, because if it can be used, it can, and will, and has been misused. The only way to assure it won't be misused is to not collect it in the first place. Just want to address the question about encryption, that end-to-end encryption is standard to the point of not really bearing mentioning. It would be incredible if they didn't have end-to-end encryption, but it doesn't really matter for the points that, that I've raised. It may keep, you know, someone from sniffing the data between the scanner and the police department server, but we're talking about, you know, official misuse is the real danger here, not somebody getting their hands on it, you know, with a, with a Wi-Fi sniffer or something. You know, talk about thirty days of data retention, why not twenty-four hours? Why not one hour? Why not, you know, the plates are scanned, and then the data's discarded immediately if they don't match the list? It's easy to get, you know, wrapped up in, in scary stories of solving time-sensitive crimes, but it's not worth what you're giving up. We could solve domestic violence and child abuse by putting cameras in everybody's house, but that's not a price we're willing to pay. These cameras will create a record of everyone's daily life, month at a time. All the places you go can easily be queried and build a map of what you do on a daily basis. Speaking about repercussions for violating California values, if an officer is found to, what, what repercussions are those? Like, specifically, what if somebody is charged with murder in another state for seeking an abortion in California, and an officer gives the data that leads to that person being convicted and sentenced to life, or maybe death?
Thank you, Mike. Actually, Mike, your three minutes are up, but we appreciate you being here. Thank you. Alice.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I sent you all emails earlier yesterday, so I'm Alice Finan. I'm a local teacher and a mom. I don't live in Eureka, but I love Jaro Gigi, and I come all the time to work and to shop. So, I am really invested in Jaro Gigi and in Humboldt County, and really uplifting it, because I do love this place. So, I just wanted to go over a couple of things. This is the first time I've been at a city council meeting here, and I wanna just commend all of you for being so kind and asking awesome and pertinent questions, and being so welcoming. And if we are really working to dismantle white supremacy, like you said at the beginning of the meeting, I just wanted to talk about what white supremacy is, this inherently superior superiority to other races, and that white people should have control over other races. And for me, what Flock is, wanting to have complete coverage of the city, that is right there online with white supremacy. So, it's also the social, economic, and political systems that collectively enable white people to maintain power over people of other races. That's the Flock system right there, right? Marginalized people, activists, people who are standing up and putting their lines, their lives online, are really who's at risk right now. And if we're thinking about you are all upholding the Constitution, Flock is infringing on our freedom of speech, so it's infringing on my First Amendment right to protest, because right now, I am standing up against the genocidal apartheid regime of Israel, and I am considered a terrorist. I have stood outside of the courthouse for weeks and months and been screamed at that I was a terrorist. If we're thinking about all of these people tonight who are opposed to Flock, the only person that I heard that wanted it was the cop. So, it's basically, it's all of the people against the cop, and I don't trust the cops. Our second top cop here, Assistant DA Roger Reese, is an example of what we need to fight against. He gets to do whatever he wants. He goes into the voting headquarters and badgers people, trying to get them to vote for Trump, over and over and over, until somebody actually had to leave, and he was never reprimanded for that. Every single time he's out there with his Israeli.
Thank you, Alice. Your three minutes are up. Thanks for being here. Jamila.
Hi, thank you, and yeah, just so many powerful points have already been made today. So, I will just kind of pivot a little bit, because it's amazing to see how many people have been showing up. And I just want to say that, you know, we're talking about this technologies being framed in the context of like helping find missing persons. And I just want to make this point that indigenous people make up only two percent of our population here, but indigenous women account for nearly ten percent of all missing person cases. And indigenous women are twelve times more likely to go missing or be murdered than anyone else in the general population. And this is rooted in the violence of this surveillance settler state. And technology like this benefits system of power that have historically and continue to oppress and silence us. And it benefits those who seek to maintain, maintain control. And this is not about safety, because if it were, where's the investment in community-led solutions? Where's the commitment to solving the crisis of missing indigenous peoples? Where's the accountability for the harm already caused by unchecked surveillance and increase in policing? And if this is being sold as a solution to missing persons cases, why has there been no meaningful investment in addressing the root cause of this crisis? Why are indigenous communities still fighting for basic resources, for law enforcement to actually take their cases, and for systemic racism to be dismantled? Surveillance technology like this does nothing to bring justice to the thousands of indigenous families still waiting for answers. I don't for one second believe this is a technology to serve people. And again, it's so amazing to see how many people are showing up, but like, let's keep this energy going for all of these ways that all of this is interconnected across the world. This is not isolated. The same systems of surveillance and control are being used globally to oppress and dehumanize. The Israeli government uses AI technology to enforce apartheid and genocide in Palestine against my family in Gaza, using an AR, AI system that was just mentioned earlier called Lavender, which has been murdered to, they've estimated it's at eight hundred thousand people, just in the last year and a half. So, it's all connected. The neglect of indigenous communities here, the surveillance of black folks, and targeting of them here, and the targeting of Palestinians there, and the criminalization of existence everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamila. Uh, looks like, is it?
Sarah.
Sarah. Sarah, welcome.
Hi. I just wanted to add my voice to the many people that have come out tonight to oppose the installation of these Flock cameras. As a community member, I feel strongly against this type of surveillance. It's a breach of our individual, individual privacy, a gross misuse of city funds. And it also seems to me that there's a lot of vague language included in the technology proposal, allowing for so many loopholes. And I think that even just the proposal itself comes with an assumption that all community members feel that the police force has their best interest in mind. And I know for a fact that unfortunately, that's not the case with many BIPOC community members, and many members in general, and I feel that this surveillance could be another way to further exploit vulnerable populations here. And honestly, I myself do not feel comfortable, especially in the current political climate, having my vehicle and myself photographed and surveilled as I go about my business. So, I'm just hoping that you all have take, take everyone's voices in the community into consideration, and vote no on installing these cameras. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And it looks like.
Shannon. Shannon, you have your hand raised?
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. Yeah. I agree with everything that, everything that's been said. I understand why the police want this technology. It absolutely will help them, you know, do their jobs, but there's so much potential for incredible, incredible abuse of this technology, and it will be abused. There's no question about that. We are humans. We've seen this happen. The abuse of power, the abuse of technology, our whole lives. And I just, you know, this company, it's not that old. It started in twenty seventeen, and now they're investing in drones, and we're witnessing with Ukraine and Gaza, like, what drones can do to human beings and to human bodies. And it's just really, really scary. What kind of world is my daughter going to live in, in the next ten years? That's what I'm thinking when I see this kind of stuff now, and I used to not think like this. But my mind and my view has shifted dramatically in the last two years, mostly witnessing what the United States of America is doing abroad. I'm like, finally getting, understanding what US imperialism is really about, and it's really scary. And I respect our local brothers and sisters in law enforcement here. I have neighbors who are law enforcement. I respect them as individuals and as my neighbors, and as part of the working class, but I do not have any, I just, law enforcement as a whole, and what it's going to be used to control our populations moving forward into this totalitarian and police state that I can just already see happening. I don't, I, I don't want to have any part of that, and I just think Humboldt County is a really unique place. We have said no to a lot of things that are mainstream in other parts of the state and the country. And I think this is another way for us to take a stand and say, no, we don't want to be like every other city and just surveil all of our citizens. And we can, we can be better than that, and I'm just so impressed with everyone who spoke in today and come out to share their input on this, and this is, this is public process, and this is something that hopefully Americans can still do in the next year or two. Because honestly, I, I'm so scared. I'm so scared about what the future holds for my family and my children, and my friends here, here and abroad. Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon.
Phone number ending in one eight two one. Oh, okay. I can move on. Why is it gonna be a second? Melinda?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. We'll come back to you. AI? It's not, it's AI. It's AI. I double-checked. AI. You have. You're unmuted.
Okay, anyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Maze, Al Maze. I'm a recent transplant individual from Chicago, Illinois, so I've been out here about three or four years. And, in my previous life, I guess, I was an entrepreneur businessman. And in my current life, I'm an incarceration ministry, dealing with those who are less fortunate. But I think I may have missed some things, so forgive me if you've already covered some of these things. Number one, was there ever an actual demonstration of this whole program as to how it works? And was there a bidding process involved here? Was Flock the low bidder? And how do you determine how many cameras that the city needs? And in addition to that, will those cameras tie into the existing system? And will it all be reflected in the cost, like a cost reduction, reduction per camera? So, help me out here. Was there a public review of the actual contract that the city would be signing? Because I'm very concerned about the private rights of the individual citizen. And it's very important to have language in there that totally restricts any possible use and selling any type of information concerning the citizens that are being involved, because once this stuff hits the clout, it's out there, and you can't really stop it. So, you have to have something in your contract to kind of prevent this type of situation from developing. So, those are the things that I'm concerned about, and I don't know what the city's gonna do, but from what I've been hearing tonight, there's a lot of tension in here about this whole issue. And maybe the, the city should pause a little bit and reconsider some of the, the situations that the citizens are talking about, because it doesn't seem like it's a very popular program right now. the citizens are talking about, because it doesn't seem like it's a very popular program right now. And you are supposed to be working for your citizenry, so let's stop. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Melinda? No, she's there. Melinda, you're unmuted. Great.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Melinda Chairbelini, and I am a member of your COPP board. But I want to make it clear that I do not represent the board. I'm only myself as an individual member and a, you know, citizen of Eureka. I've got like five points to address and concerns that came up in the COPP board meeting and other public forums. Number one, I just want to say, please, put public safety first and approve this contract for automated license plate readers for the use by our police department. Number two, the use of this technology will greatly enhance EPD's effectiveness in criminal investigations. The third point is the potential benefits of using this technology as another tool in the toolbox, as we say, far outweighs any concerns you may have about privacy issues or thoughts about the potential misuse of the system by EPD officers, especially considering that the data being collected is a photograph of the back of a vehicle and a license plate that's taken while on a public road. That's it. Number four, there are many, many safeguards addressing abuse by administrators and officers that are built into the policy and procedure, including training, compliance with state codes, industry standards, administration oversight and audits, along with very clear descriptions of permitted and impermissible uses and consequences for those violations. For example, access to and use of the ALPR system requires all users, administrators and officers alike, to have individual credentials, like a PIN or a password. And that login and log-out information is subject to audit. So my last point reiterates my first point. Please put public safety first and consider what may happen if you choose not to approve the use of ALPRs in the city of Eureka. Your strange police force will be left without this vital tool to help identify and apprehend criminals fleeing from the scene of a crime or committing crimes in progress, including stolen vehicles, which has happened to me twice in my neighborhood. It will also hamper their ability to locate missing persons who may be the subject of an Amber Alert or Silver or Feather Alert or human trafficking victims. So the next time your phone buzzes and alerts you to a missing person or an abducted child with a possible vehicle description, maybe think about how the flock cameras in the city of Eureka might help to find that child. And now-
Thank you, Melinda. Your three minutes are up. We appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Sarai?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, amazing. Wow. Okay, I just have to take a deep breath after the last one. One person, that one person who was serious about the, yeah, one person out of everybody. Just want to make that little point right there. Also, Flock is a company that is currently working with Cop City in Atlanta, and we know that the, it is like the goal of that training facility to expand nationally. So I just want to put that out there, like the relationship to places that are training people, like about how to infringe more effectively on people's rights. A quick Google search also, this, this article says license plate scanners were supposed to bring peace of mind. Instead, they tore a neighborhood apart. Also, the ACLU, who the Board of Supervisors earlier today in their meeting suggested constituents go to, to learn more about their rights in Oklahoma, is trying to let citizens know about Flock and Flock cameras as they continue again to infringe on people's rights that are already like in jeopardy. So we have like national examples. We have the gentleman who gave examples in California about how trash the system is. And I just also want to make the point that like the fact that its policies and different things like holding up the fact that information is not going to be shared, like that, it just shows that if there was no law or if there was no policy, our rights would be infringed on like no problem. And we can see that with how quickly like this process is going through. Miles was saying, oh, this has been on the calendar or whatever. But council members were confused about that. So it's super interesting, like, how do you think we as constituents feel? Like if the council members were concerned about this, like all the wonderful questions that you guys ask? And you guys are on the council, right? Like imagine people who are having to deal with this like day to day, deal with like racist cops and surveillance day to day. Like imagine how like those people are feeling if, if you're, if your city council can even see the issues, the glaring civil liberties issues that are here. So it's just, it just goes to make the point that if the cops didn't have to by nature of policy or by nature of, you know, their so-called intention, which we already know the true intentions, like Luna had brought up, all the different things going on with the cops there. It just goes to show that like if they didn't have to, they wouldn't protect us. And by the same token, if they could share the information, they would. And so that means that they would find a way to to restrict us, to collect us, to surveil us. And like, we just really, really, really don't like depending on your guys' intentions, whether or not you-
Thank you, Sarai. Your three minutes are up. And at this point, I appreciate you being here. At this point, we will have to extend the meeting if I can get a motion to do so, and we will take a quick bio break after we do so. So. We get a motion?
Motion to extend until ten thirty?
Second.
I mean.
So we're gonna move, are we gonna, the motion is to extend the meeting till ten thirty? And it's been seconded, so please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. And we're gonna take a two-minute, just run to the, take care of business, and we'll be right back. Welcome back. We're going to go ahead and reconvene this evening as city council meeting. Again, I want to thank everybody for being here. Big appreciation for everybody that stepped out today. We still do have some public comment on Zoom, and that's where we're going to begin. So our first person is, is it Alexis? Alexis?
Hello. Thank you, city council members and fellow members of the community. My name is Alexis Tekaki, and I am employed by the city of Eureka, but I am here tonight representing myself. I have never spoken in a city council meeting before, and I am here to urge you to vote no on the proposal to install more flock cameras and to advocate for the removal of current cameras. Flock has a history of being used in unethical ways, and they have no place in our town. The best way to prevent crime is through prevention interventions like comprehensive mental health care, crisis management, not AI surveillance. I do believe this private company of Flock will sell our data. This has happened historically with private information like DNA companies, with the example of twenty-three and me. Data leaks are dangerous and highly likely. I do not believe that our city of Eureka police would have the authority to prevent this data from being given to the federal government or other private parties. These flock cameras are not safe. Data encryption is unreliable, and therefore, these cameras are a violation of our Fourth Amendment rights to privacy. Please vote no on this extreme measure of surveillance. I truly think it would be a waste of money. Resisting a surveillance state is a necessary tactic right now in the face of the current fascist presidential administration. I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis.
Hank?
Check, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi. So I'm gonna take a minute to talk about statistics. Statistics are boring, but you're gonna hear them anyway, because flock representatives like Kristen MacLeod have been feeding you all false statistics about the effectiveness of flock cameras at preventing crime. Let's start with San Marino, California. Flock says that crime there decreased by seventy percent between twenty twenty and twenty-one due to installation of flock cameras. In reality, it's a five percent increase in neighborhood burglaries from twenty to twenty-three, and more serious offenses like larceny and murder stay completely flat. Flock claims that crime in Dayton, Ohio was reduced by forty-three percent over two years after flock installation. But in reality, this crime reduction began one year and eight months prior to the installation of the cameras. Flock claims that there was a twenty-two percent decrease in violent crime in Fort Worth, Texas. It only increased, in fact, by five percent. And finally, Flock claims that ten percent of reported crimes in the US are solved using flock cameras. In reality, this study was conducted purely internally, and when reviewing the efficacy of it, six criminal justice academics found the study's conclusions problematic, and one stated that this borders on ludicrous. I encourage you all to consider who you are trusting with your privacy and the safety of your communities and your loved ones. The Supreme Court holds that individuals have a reasonable expectation of privacy in the home of their physical movements because the privacies of life those movements can reveal, including with respect to digital tracking methods used to obtain that data. Requirements of reasonable suspicion or probable cause are not applied prior to use of an ALPR flock camera, meaning that an individual can have personal information stored and investigated for no reason other than driving through a given area. Please consider who you're trusting, these things, consider the kind of people that you're trusting your safety and your privacy with. You are placing all of this highly sensitive personal info in the hands of racist, violent gang members who are a danger to our communities and our children. In conclusion, I want to urge you to make like a shepherd and get the flock out of here. Thank you. And thank you for giving me this time to give you my two cents.
Thanks, Hank.
Jonathan?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Jonathan McCarroll. I work in Eureka. I was born and raised in Humboldt County. I have previous experience working with AWS systems, and I just wanted to mention that that AWS has the centers in different places throughout the country, including out of state. So I guess I'm not sure if there's any way to to verify, but the data could be going out of state, you know, immediately after being created. AWS has large data centers in the northern and on the east coast. I noticed that Flock is headquartered in Atlanta, Georgia. Yeah, so a lot of other people have mentioned there's a lot of unknowns with this service, it seems like. And I don't see any, any way for there to be, like, as it is a private company, I don't think it'd be possible for us, for the city of Eureka to devote the time and resources to independently audit this company. And all kinds of things could happen, even if they are following good security protocol. Mistakes happen, and those mistakes could possibly result in data leak or privacy loss. And yeah, this is my, my first time speaking in a city council meeting as well, and I just wanted to say that you know, given the choice between privacy and more crime rate, I would choose privacy one hundred percent of the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Gina?
Hello, I just wanted to say that we don't need flock cameras to combat crime, because the only crime is happening inside the police. I don't know what you call it, like, I don't know, where the police go, where the police work, I don't know. Okay, anyways, I'm just gonna like list all the crimes that some police officers have been in Humboldt County have been like accused of, and it's kind of insane. In two thousand eighteen, Dave Gunderson was accused of, was arrested and charged with rape and battery against his wife. In two thousand twenty-four April, Samuel David Williams, who was also a lieutenant at the Humboldt County Sheriff's Department, was charged with felony charges over domestic violence. He showed up to his ex-wife's house and threatened his ex-wife's new boyfriend with his gun. And then shortly he quit after that. In November of two thousand twenty-four, the sheriff's office settled an excessive force lawsuit for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars because Deputy Ryan Campadonia smashed a window, cracked someone's head open with a baton, elbowed this man in the face during a traffic stop. This was a traffic stop, okay? And that's a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And I also just want to mention how in March of two thousand twenty-four, William Hanso, which is the Humboldt County Sheriff, which has ran twice on the post in two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-two, was accused also of excessive force and also evidence tampering. And again, like the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office like has like constantly opposed any advisory oversight board over the, over them. So obviously, they don't like to be surveilled. So we don't like it either. So yeah, I'm just gonna say I oppose this. And the only technology that I will support are ankle monitors on every single cop in Humboldt-
She muted herself.
Did we lose you, Gina?
She muted herself.
Oh, no, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, we missed your, well. Okay, you muted yourself, so we didn't hear your last little bit, but thanks for being here, Gina.
Fox?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I wanted to say good evening to everyone. I am incredibly grateful to and feeling so empowered by my fellow community members who came to speak tonight against the flock cameras. I am grateful to council members for asking incredibly thoughtful questions and hearing us all speak tonight. I share many of the concerns and fears expressed in the room about the abuse of increased surveillance and the connections to the violence in Atlanta, Georgia and Palestine. Because all of that's been said, I would like to offer another perspective that hasn't been said yet. And it is about the energy use and water consumption of AI. If one in ten people use ChatGPT for a hundred-word email once a week for a year, that would be all of the water Rhode Island uses in a day and a half, or all of the power in houses of Washington DC could use in twenty days. One ChatGPT search is the equivalent to a water bottle or running an LED light bulb for about fifteen minutes. In the state of Washington, Microsoft's AI consumes about twelve liters of water for each kilowatt hour used. And the average CCTV camera uses about four to fifteen watts. Doing some math with the twenty-one cameras that you're gonna be potentially installing, running twenty-four hours a day, three hundred sixty-five days a year, and costing that twelve liters of water per hour at the lower end, that'd be two thousand one hundred eighty-six gallons a year, and at fifteen watts at the high end, that would be ten thousand nine hundred thirty gallons a year. And on January ninth, twenty twenty-five, twenty percent of the fire hydrants and palisades went dry. So I'm thinking about how climate change is worsening, and if we're rushing towards increasing AI use, it's going to take more and more energy to run AI and more and more water to cool it. Please think about which communities and which peoples are most impacted by climate change. Please use this money instead for things that could actually reduce crime, like investing in housing, access to- Please use this money instead for things that could actually reduce crime like investing in housing, access to healthcare and services, livable income. Please get rid of your other flock cameras and defund the EPD and put all of that money towards community care. And please vote no on these cameras. Thank you.
Thank you, Fox.
Ellen P.
Hi, thank you. Um, I am a resident of Ward Four. And I am just feeling really proud to be a citizen of Jaru Gigi tonight. I can't believe that I just heard people from all walks of life, from all seemingly political persuasions, all different kinds of perspectives come together against flock cameras, against mass surveillance in our community. Amazing. Um, uh, I will talk about something that I don't think has been mentioned, or maybe it has, but I'll just talk about it again. I will echo every single concern that everyone else shared. Um, I, I wanna point out again, I think someone did point this out, that um, the policy talks about targeting vehicles associated with quote homeland security in lowercase and quote terrorist-related activities. And as I think someone already pointed out, uh, you know, the administration uh, currently in the White House is considering a whole lot of people be, to be doing terrorist-related activities. Um, and I personally, I'm especially thinking of pro-Palestine, um, folks here who have used their free speech rights to speak up against genocide and apartheid. We are considered terrorists, not only by the current president, we were considered so by the past president. We are considered so by the Congress. We are considered so by many people in this community. Um, and Trump, it just issued an executive order targeting pro-Palestine immigrant students for deportation. And this is especially relevant be, to me, because um, this very police department that is making this proposal beat students over the head on campus last year. We don't even have to go back to twenty twenty-one. We can go back to last spring. I mean, uh, the EPD officers cracked those kids' heads open. And we're supposed to tru- to trust the chief? He's just up there saying, "Trust me, bro"? I don't think so. I don't trust him. I know a lot of people spoke thinking he has our best interest in mind. No way. He absolutely does not. He clearly does not. So how can we in this community find these cameras to be anything other than an intimidation tactic by the police department and a serious threat to our safety? Um, I also wanna mention that uh, uh, I really appreciate all of the ties that folks made to um, how this is, you know, currently enacted around the world and around the country in very nefarious ways. And just because the chief is saying, "Trust me, bro, um, I'm only gonna use it for good." Um, it, like someone said, the chief could be gone i- in next year. I don't know when. Uh, the technology could change, the laws could change. We cannot set up a mass surveillance system in Eureka. I mean, that is, that is outrageous. Um, so thank you all for asking really tough.
Thank you, Ellen. Your three minutes are up.
Phillip?
Hello, thank you for taking my call. Um, thirty-year IT professional, fifteen-year Eurekaan homeowner. And um, I I think probably two years ago, I would have said to myself, "Yeah, well, who cares? It's the public space. It's perfectly legal." No problem. Cameras everywhere anyway. I've got them all over my house. But as I look at what's happening in the last, what, like, uh, fourteen days or so, um, I am surprised, shocked, dismayed at how quickly good intentions can be undermined and uprooted and thrown out the window. I'm watching, um, a place at inaugurations held for um, trusted elected officials be given to oligarchs. And then the same oligarchs turn around and uh, call USAID a fraud and a terrorist organization. Something our federal Congress has approved bipartisanly for twenty-odd years and more. Um, I, I, I'm a, I'm a white male. I have little reason to fear in this country, and I know it. And yet, I fear now, speaking out against Trump, his cronies. Um, we just saw the man come down to California and turn on that big old spigot and dump millions of gallons of water for no good. You know, what is he, what is he gonna do when he wants to come up here? He's just gonna walk in and take it? I know you're thinking similar things, and I, I understand the appeal of the force multiplier that these cameras can be in a time of diminishing budgets and concerns about grants and people, um, constituents expressing their fears and their concerns about, uh, many of the things we have here, but um, I would, I would urge, um, some caution. Thank you.
Thank you, Phillip.
Gigi?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you. Um, thank you so much. Um, here with the literal full house, um, plus that you have to um, urge you to vote no, um, um, on these cameras. Um, I don't know if you're familiar, um, with the Lemkin Institute for Genocide Prevention and Human Security. Um, but just about a week ago, um, the Lemkin Institute has issued a red flag alert for genocide for the United States. Um, I think it's really important to sit with that for a minute, um, to think about what that means, what the implications for that um, are and how an increased, um, surveillance state um, is, is a, is a freeway, um, for fascism to take full hold. And I think that, um, this community in particular, I'm, I'm from here. Um, you know, I'm in my mid-thirties. I grew up here. I spent most of my life here. Um, and, um, I've, I've never known this community to be a community, uh, that would be in support of increased surveillance. Um, the people here, we don't want this. You can hear it. You can see it. We're, we're not only afraid, uh, of the, the current state of affairs, but we understand, um, that this kind of surveillance in the hands of law enforcement does not keep us safer. Um, we're, we're a small community. Um, we, we should be funding ways to connect with each other as a community, to support each other as a community, um, to uplift the people who are most vulnerable and at risk. That is what makes communities safer. Um, that is what prevents crime. These cameras will not prevent crime. Um, they will make it easy for states that decide that abortion care is punishable by death, to have access to the women who are seeking life-saving care um, in a state that honors abortion care, right? They, uh, they will make it easy, uh, to hunt down trans youth who, um, are here because it is one of the last safe places to be. This is not, um, this is not who we are as Humboldt County. This is not who we want to be. Um, and, and we, we, we don't need to be taking tips, uh, a- and following in the suit of genocidal states like Israel that, that use
Thank you, Gigi. Your three minutes are up. We're glad you're here.
E?
Hi again. I'm really glad that everyone's here asking questions and, and talking about this. Um, I echo what so many people have said. People have made really great points. I have a few things that I wanna uplift, and I hope it's not too clunky as I jump between them. One thing that I want to point your attention to are the number of lawsuits filed, um, towards cities that have adopted flock technology. There's one that I'm looking about, that I'm looking at online right now, um, against the city of Norfolk. It's a federal lawsuit. So I just wanna kinda add to the tally here that we have risk, risk of, of lawsuit. That I'm guessing if the city entered into a legal battle like that, uh, taxpayer dollars would be funding. So we'll add that to the tally of a hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the, it's a two-year subscription, it says on the quote. Um, and then sixty-nine thousand dollars annually reoccurring after those two years. Plus the cost of privacy to everyone who lives here, lives around here, visits here. Um, plus the unknown of how this will actually shake out. There's a lot of kinda shady, like people have named, like shady, questionable, changing wording, like the part about selling data. It's like, oh, it's just wording. That's not actually like, excuse me? And then this piece about it's the data, some of the data is only kept for thirty days. And then in a few sentences later, she says, "Oh, well, thirty days is the default." So like, sounds changeable to me. Um, and we also know that laws change. And this, this is gonna be a tool that would be in the hands of law enforcement. So as laws change, and we know the direction they're changing, um, this would be a tool that would be used to keep people, um, to enforce those laws, basically. And, um, as other people have said, there are a lot of folks who are living with new levels of terror about what is going on now and what's coming. And we're watching what many experts are now calling a coup, a coup of our government. Um, we don't need to set up more infrastructure to track and trap people who are doing things that are dubbed illegal. Um, and then it's not also just a matter of how the hardware and software agree to be used or is used. There's also the, the felt sense, the body sense of safety or uneasiness that people, or, you know, or ease that people have in this community. And that's important. That's part of, of, of a quality of life, is to be able to live your life and not feel, um, like you're being watched. And I'll just name it too. A lot of folks know what it's like to be stalked. A lot of people have been stalked that I bet are on this call. It's pretty terrifying. And the feeling like you're traveling around and every, and, and, and people who you don't know, know where and, and when, and the frequency and the patterns, um, is really scary. And then I also just wanna say, you know, I'm not a fan of cameras at all.
Thank you, E. Your three minutes are up. I'm glad you're here.
Max?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Cool, great. Good evening. Um, I wanted to direct the, um, the council members back to kinda just echoing what everyone says, also saying no to the flock cameras. And just wanted to put focus back on to what someone had already stated a few moments before of why we should have flock cameras. And being that it's only the cars, kinda wanted to counter that and say, and remember that on record, the flock representative today had stated that the cameras are motion censored. Thus, this does capture any moving thing, which can be humans, on bikes, humans walking, cars, and even other things other than the license plates on the cars. Um, as the representative has also stated that the program cannot identify a person, I would like to bring attention to that. This is still a recorded image of identifiable attributes to a person that can be kept in the system that we already know can then be shared, warranted, or sold within the private company of the flock cameras. Um, this is just my concern of a citizen of Humboldt County to be, and like to other citizens as well, to be aware of the pressure that EPD is imposing on us to become a surveillance state. This is not about car theft. This is a scare tactic to prevent crimes. In reality, and in proof within statistics that where flock cameras are, it is not lessening the crime. It is actually not preventing any crimes. Um, there is nothing to back up these things. Um, as the officer before us had stated that his life goal was to lessen fear and anxiety in the community. I'm sure that I am one of many who can say ways that help me lessen my own fear and anxiety is not through police surveillance. It is through community support. And I am grateful to be surrounded by a community that has shown up today and seeks to hold each other and to speak up against the loopholes to our privacy and existence and fights to have that back. I hope that you council members make the decision of to say no to the flock cameras and protect this right to privacy. Thank you.
Thanks, Max.
Bacter?
Um, I tuned in a little bit late, um, so. But I'm gonna talk regardless. Um, I wanted to echo everyone's support against Eureka having a surveillance and ever-increasing surveillance state, and for y'all to vote no on the flock cameras. Um, and I wanted to talk a little bit about a different flock. Y'all are worrying, you know, there's another pandemic that is likely to happen um, very, very soon, the H5N1 avian influenza. And with our current administration and with Biden's useless administration. The public is not informed on the state of public health and the state of the spread of viruses and spread of pathogens. And so, living in, in Humboldt County with a lot of livestock, where seventy percent of California's livestock tested positive for H5N1, um, the first cases of bird flu were found.
Excuse me, Bacter, but we are talking about the flock cameras currently? Did you have a comment on that?
About the flock cameras.
Okay.
This is about the flock cameras.
Great, okay.
I'm sorry, have you not been sitting here to listen to everyone's complaints and how it's all connected?
I absolutely have. My concern was you were talking about bird flu and we're talking about flock cameras. Thank you. You do get your three minutes, Bacter. We're glad you're here.
What was that?
Go ahead. You still have a minute fifteen seconds.
Sorry, I, I did not understand that. So, yeah, use that money for something else. Do not surveil us. Y'all have treated Palestinian activists really poorly, um, even before the campus encampments, College of the Redwoods and, um, local police for their cameras. When there was violence against pro-Palestinian protesters, yes, was that footage released to us so that we could see the violence of College of the Redwoods? No. And so, it is related. It is related. Use that money for something else. Use that money for something else. There's pandemics happening. I mean, it's so hard to keep up, right? I'm trying to talk here about how it's really, but there's so many things that people have brought forward. And so, yes, it's connected. Yes, it's related. Yes, it's about flock. Do not tell us that we're not. We're not stupid. You know, Mayor of Arcata, um, we, Alex Stillman, we already heard that she doesn't care about the things we say. Are you signing up right behind her? Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Bacter. Come again.
That one guy?
Hello?
Hi. Welcome.
Yeah, I just wanna say, go off, Bacter. Y'all did my man dirty by interrupting them.
Thank you. Saying no more public comment. We will bring it back to council for comments and a motion. Councilmember Castellano, is it? Sure.
Um, first, I wanna appreciate, uh, a thoughtful and engaged public. And, you know, just the exercise of democracy and, you know, I, I really appreciate the number of people who came out tonight. Um, and just also appreciating city staff for, you know, uh, wrestling with difficult issues, challenging issues. Um, like many of the public commenters, I, I do have concerns about, uh, this. You know, and, and generally the danger and speed of, uh, surveillance technology and automation in general. Um, and, you know, the valuing of relationship-based approaches to, to addressing community harm. And just the importance of building community trust. And, you know, I wanna recognize, um, that there's a lot of ways that, you know, I think that's something we're actively something we're actively working on in the city. You know, sometimes when issues are presented, it's hard to get a picture of the full scope of things. And, you know, I, I, yeah, I, you know, I think that we can invest the money in better ways. I do also just want to say I have concerns about the lack of policy around privately-owned camera use and think that that's a conversation for another day. And with that, oh, sorry, I'll make a motion to deny the implementation of fixed automated license plate recognition technology and deny entering into a two-year contract with Flock Safety for twenty-one automated license plate recognition cameras and associated services.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any, are there any further comments? Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Well, first, yeah, I would like to also thank, you know, the members of the public that have shown up and how many of them said, hey, I don't usually come to anything or I haven't been to anything. And so, I really appreciate that because I feel like public process is deeply benefited by us getting to hear community voices. So I appreciate that. I also feel like I've been, I just want to address a couple of things really quickly because I feel like I've been listening to some of my staff, who I have a deep amount of respect for, take a hit tonight. So I just want to thank our officers at EPD for the good work that they're doing in our community and how much kindness and compassion is shown. And what a, what a bunch of very good officers. And so, I want to acknowledge that, and I think that's really important. I've been thinking about this a lot. My initial thought press, process on this was, we don't really have a lot of privacy anymore of any sort. You know, I was thinking about my, you know, my devices, that, you know, I remember reading something that said that, you know, the people that collect our data know us better than our spouses. But it's different when a government entity does it. I, I, I think it's already bad enough that we haven't come up with a way to address this, you know, address companies doing this with, with our information, with our lives. But it's different when it's a government. And I was thinking about balancing back and forth. I understand the idea, and I really appreciate our chief bringing this to us. I really appreciate us having this opportunity to look at everything and address it, because I know that it's a good intention. I, I know that there's a good intention here, and it's to be able to solve crimes for us and make things safer, because we are dealing with some issues here in our community. Those good intentions aside, I have given this a lot of thought, and I just, you know, I, people were bringing up their Fourth Amendment rights and that kind of thing. And I think the framers of our constitution could not comprehend the level of technology that we have and that we live under now. But the intent of those, the intent of our Bill of Rights, the intent of, I think, the Fourth Amendment in particular, was this idea of, of privacy, and that people couldn't really encroach and intrude in on your lives without there being just cause. And I think this is just one of a number of different ways where that can happen. And so, I wanted to first thank our chief for bringing it to us. I want to thank everybody for participating in the conversation. And I just wanted to kind of give respect where respect was due, but also say it's going to be a no for me as well and explain why.
Councilmember Bauer? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. I just wanted to add that it was mentioned tonight that the Sheriff's Department has eight cameras out around the county. If this is an issue that is important to you, and clearly it's an issue that is important to a lot of people, you should reach out to the Board of Supervisors, who oversees the Sheriff's Department. Since flock is a subscription service, there's, that's something that can be canceled on a relatively short timeline if you, if, if they choose to do so. Also, listed in our agenda summary, it says that Cal Poly Humboldt, Fortuna Police Department, Arcata Police Department, and the Humboldt County DA's office are all in talks with Flock Safety to implement this technology. So those are folks you might want to talk to as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, Renee, you said it so eloquently. And first, thank you to the, I mean, we, two hours of public comment, we haven't had that in a long time, and for good reason. You know, people care about democracy, their privacy. And, you know, it's great to see people passionate about an issue. That, that says a lot. I do want to say, you know, that Eureka is a small city with big city problems, and the only reason this was brought as a tool was to try and address that. I, I'm not sure people really grasp that, that fact, you know? And that's why people denigrate the city on social media, you know? Because we do have big city problems, and we're looking for solutions that, you know, help. And a lot of those solutions are not about, there are people that are, that are going to be a problem, and that requires a police force, that requires, you know, EPD to deal with those folks that aren't, don't have the community's best interests at heart. And I appreciate the chief for bringing this forward as a tool. And that's all it is, like any other law, or, or, you know, anything that provides us with an opportunity to, to make our city safer. So I do want to recognize that and recognize that there's no, you know, mal-intent by EPD or the chief. This is purely trying to figure out a way to make people feel safer in the community. So, respect for that. I will say, like, like Councilmember Contreras Deloche said, you know, we, we, people showed a lot of concern about license plate readers, and yet, we're all carrying around a location service device that tracks through every move, you know? You know, you may turn your location services off, but knowing that cer- certain social media people are cozying up to, to people in power, I tell you what, it's not hard to get a subpoena or a warrant for that, for your location. It's really not. Figure out where you've been, what you're doing, and a point-in-time shot of a license plate is much less than this. Just throwing that out there, food for thought, you know? There's greater issues than, you know, our, the supercomputer in our pocket that's recording our every move and our every website we visit. So just thinking about that. I, I also want to say, I think we could have done better when it comes to, to this topic of discussion, you know? Sharing legal opinions, you know, amongst our, our staff in, in a timelier fashion would have been helpful. Maybe this agenda item would have been pulled, I don't know, but that would have been, I think, appropriate. And, yeah, you know, I, initially, I thought this is a great tool, and, you know, but I, you know, Katie, I think, you know, really brought forward the concern about sharing with the pub, you know, with, not the public, but the federal, federal folks that don't seem to have a lot of our best interests at heart right now, right? At all. So it's hard to support that, this tool, when there's so much concern from all of us, frankly. So I hope we can figure out another way to, to, to help the public feel safe in, in, in their community and help our police force, which actually are there to help protect us, and they're not bad. And I, I wish there wasn't so much dislike for people that are just us, just citizens, you know, that took on a job that's really challenging. And they're there to protect us. And I hope someday, maybe that discussion about, you know, maybe introduce yourself to one of them and get to know them, and you realize they're not, they're not your enemy. Probably have a lot more to say, but I think we know where we're going with this, so I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. It's getting late. Going, going with what's at, at least been already stated, with the lack of privacy we do carry around with us, I can't imagine anyone at the dais right now doesn't have this in their pocket or purse or on them. So just following that, it, it goes with saying, we've opted into that. And paradoxically, being in public's one of the last few private places we have, if we take into account all the smart devices that we have on ourselves, let alone in our homes. But we've made that conscious choice. We've signed that contract, we move forward with that. And so, with what's been expressed here tonight, every concern has been valid, even, even the lone comment about wanting to approve this for terms of public safety. There is that sense of, of, you know, history, though, when you look at people, regardless of their socioeconomic status, going back into race, there's a history, there's a culture that's been pervasive there for a lot of these folks. And so, it's recognizing that, and it's, I don't want to say it's moving beyond that, but it's making peace with it and recognizing that we could have done more in terms of our outreach in this. Because even for all the folks that said, vote no on this tonight, there were still folks who said, move forward with this if it's more concrete, if it's more concise in terms of the policy. I mean, even the ACLU doesn't say no to placing cameras for surveillance. They caution to reduce the impulse to blanket our public spaces. And so, to do that in a town that has, you know, just shy of fourteen square miles with twenty-one cameras, that does feel like a lot. And so, I know I'm moving forward with voting no on this tonight, but there's the possibility of doing better in the coming months or years to look for something and develop something in our policy, and maybe finding or doing this in-house or finding a vendor that is located within our state.
Thank you. So at this point, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
To be clear, yeah, the motion is to deny.
That's what I mean, deny. I apologize.
No, you said it right. Okay, there's, there's some, okay, the motion is to deny. So if you, if you want to deny, vote yes. If you want to approve, vote no. Or if you want to trash that motion and start over. Yeah, you go.
So let's go. We got fourteen minutes.
Can we manage a vote?
Please? Yeah.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. And again, thank you, everybody, for sticking it out with us tonight. We really appreciate it. Hope you all come back. Future agenda items? Anybody? Good. Katie, I mean, Councilmember Moulton?
I would like to explore a policy of Eureka being a sanctuary city to prevent the EPD from voluntarily cooperating with federal immigration enforcement. We don't have a policy that prevents EPD from working with ICE. I would like to explore that.
Yeah, we're not a sanctuary city. So if that's the...
So Councilmember, Councilmember Bauer, you need some clarification?
Yeah, are we talking about sanctuary city or not cooperating?
My understanding is that that's how sanctuary cities operate, is that our local law enforcement wouldn't be allowed by policy to cooperate. We can't stop anyone else from coming in and enforcing other laws, but we can put a policy in place that prevents EPD from cooperating with immigration or... Well, let's start there. That's, I'd like to start the conversation.
Mayor, City Manager Slattery, like, has his hand up?
City Manager Slattery?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council and Mayor. We don't, I just wanted to make clarification. We, we did look at this a while back, and Mayor Begel may remember this. We do, well, we're not a sanctuary city. We did pass a resolution somewhat related to that, but I just wanted to give that information, that we did have a resolution, but we are not a sanctuary city.
So can we bring it before council to look at that resolution and possibly something more?
Oh, definitely, definitely.
I'm not asking you, Miles. I'm asking them.
So we've got the thumbs up, so we'll move on.
Thank you.
Is there another item? Councilmember Fernandez?
I wanted to get an update on where we are with our review for the noise ordinance that I asked for back in November, along, and along with our review of our disaster preparedness plan that I asked for in December. Oh, yeah, okay. Well, I got...
Thumbs up all around.
Okay, I got one.
One more thing.
Go ahead, Scott. I had two more.
Yeah, you know, we had some really interesting discussions tonight about federal decisions being made. I'd like to have a, some kind of legal update, maybe monthly, to look at how executive orders may affect, number one, federal grants that we receive, number two, any laws that may, that may be passed at the federal level that may affect our city. You know, just to get an understanding, like, things are moving fast, maybe it's every meeting, just something to understand what is going on that could affect our, our community. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Mayor. Much to what I had asked last month, I would still like to put together a work group with two council members to determine the feasibility of a city sanctioned unhoused person's campsite.
We voted on it last month. We did. We gave thumbs up on it last month, our last meeting.
Did not.
Oh, did it?
We're talking about a work group to study it.
Well, there you go. Okay.
So can I, can I get some clarification on that? So is it bringing back something to council to, my understanding is the work group would be countywide of some sort?
That's what I tried asking for last month, and it got turned down. So I thought I'd make it more simple this time and leave it to a work group of two council members. So...
So it's just you guys?
Yeah, with staff, I, I, I mean.
So that's what I'm saying. I mean, we can, we can totally do that. I'm just wondering whether or not you want something brought back to council as an agenda item, or that this, I don't think we can...
Well, yeah, I guess it would have to come back as a...
Come back and agendize it and set up some sort of parameters on what that looks like?
Yep.
Is that what you're looking at?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So with that, we will move on to council reports. Councilmember Castellano?
Are we not doing City Manager Report?
No, we are not. Thank you, though.
Nobody told you.
Excuse me, yeah. So I was told by Assistant City Manager Powell that we were going to forego this important topic until a time when it wasn't ten twenty-two in the evening. Are you good with that?
Yeah.
City Manager Slattery?
I just, I just want to fill in a couple of things that weren't a part of that. As far as the disaster preparedness, as I informed council when that was brought up, they had a meeting that was happened two weeks ago, and we did stalk to Ryan Derby, and he is scheduled to come to a council meeting likely in March for that. And I will need to follow up with Councilmember Mario about what he's exactly asking about the noise ordinance, because we've had discussions with the city count, with the city attorney, and we're going to need some clarification on that, but we will bring that back as soon as we get that.
Thanks for, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Slattery. Councilmember Castellano?
Okay, I'll be quick. I attended the Eureka Main Street Planning Retreat and Economic Development Committee Meeting, meeting for the Beta Zoo Trail, and I did travel to Sacramento where I vice chaired the Housing Community Economic Development Committee for Cal Cities. I'll leave it at that.
Much appreciated.
Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. I have no travel to report. I did attend the Citizen Oversight on Police Practices Board Meeting, a Beta Zoo Trail Meeting, the Chamber of Commerce Gala, acknowledging some great local businesses, including local nonprofits. And I wanted to encourage everyone, especially in the second... And I wanted to encourage everyone, uh, especially in the second ward, to attend a meeting on February 24th regarding development of the Sunset Heights property. That is the, um, the bluff between Harris and Henderson, uh, where there's going to be housing built. And now is a great time to get involved in that process before anything has been built. That'll be at Alice Bernie Elementary, February 24th at 6:30 in the evening. If you look up Sunset Heights on, um, eureka.ca.gov, you'd probably find that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, city travel to Sacramento for the aforementioned League of Cities Conference. I'm on the Government Transparency and Labor Relations Committee. Committee still continues to try and lobby the state, uh, to abide, or the legislature to abide by similar provisions as we have to in the Brown Act. And we added a plank to lobby the state to allow certain decision-making bodies to meet virtually, such as Redwood Region Economic Development Commission because of how dispersed we are around our county. I was unable to attend the Bolt Gala as the, as a result of needing to be out of town yet again, but it sounds like it was lively and fun. And then this past weekend, I participated in a role-playing game fundraiser at NCRT, now called the D Street Theater, featured local elected comedians and performers. It was fun.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
I too traveled to Sacramento. Um, I'm on the, uh, Cal Cities Environmental Quality, uh, Committee. And I'll just say this real quick, we have three priorities we're focused on for this legislative year, climate change and resiliency, energy and utilities, and disaster and emergency preparedness response. So, um, we'll be getting on that, uh, for 2025. I attended a Keep Eureka Beautiful meeting, um, Beta Zoo Trail, exciting stuff coming, um, this year, um, in regards to that trail development. And I didn't make the gala, the chamber gala, because I got a shingles vaccine. Don't ever do that if you plan on doing anything the next day, because it wipes you out. But get it if you're over 50, like me. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, okay. Um, so, uh, I'm gonna put in a plug for volunteering with the Warming Center really quick. I did that a couple of times. So, um, even though we had the first training, we had about 70 people or so go through that training, um, they are having trouble staffing it. Um, and so, just wanna encour- uh, we need to do another training, um, and we need to try to recruit more volunteers, but just want to encourage people to do that. It's, it is safe, it is clean, and it is heartwarming and touching. Please volunteer. Um, I met, uh, with one of the environmental lawyers from Epic. We had a, um, coffee and talked about kind of future of offshore wind and kind of what we thought might be happening with that. I also had a, attended a dinner meeting with Envir- um, elected officials to protect America, also about offshore wind and about their future plans. Yeah, Councilmember Fernandez was there, about their future plans and them, um, them kind of hoping to bring, uh, people from Oregon and Washington into, um, Humboldt County and to have a meeting here with everybody. And then, uh, yesterday I went and attended a community meeting, um, with Open Door and with representatives from Hatcher to talk about, you know, needle exchange and that kind of thing. And, um, so, went to the, the Bolt Gala. Um, I'm no fun, I always leave everything early, but it was great to see everybody. And then, um, I went to the Beta Zoo Trail Meeting as well with, uh, Councilmember Bauer.
You guys such, do such great things in our city. I appreciate you all. And for the public, if you're still awake, um, please support Big Brothers Big Sisters, Team Mary Mycelium, that's our Eureka City team, and we would love to have your support in supporting our local youth. With that, we're adjourned.